Valentine's evening with us on the Twelton City Council. Uh, this is the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Twelton uh, City Council meeting. Uh, now called this meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Hillier.
Thank you. Everyone would like to put their hand over their heart if you choose and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hillier. That brings us to our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen led by Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Just um, an little update, there's a lot of information that's changing and one of the things that's changed is that people that are moderately or severely immunocompromised and have had their third dose more than three months ago, it's time for your next booster. And they changed this guideline from five months to three months, so I just wanted to make people aware of that. Um, currently, there's twelve percent available of ICU beds, which is over ten percent, which is the first time we've seen that for a very long time. And seven percent still under ten percent available for non-ICU beds. And um, I just want to take one second to say a family member of mine had gone to our local hospital here in Twalatin and was unable to go into an ICU bed um, for the first night. So just being aware that the hospitals are still under incredible stress when making decisions out there. In Oregon, so far, we have lost six thousand three hundred and seventy-three lives to COVID nineteen and in the United States, we're at nine hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, and for please join me in a moment of silence to remember those that we've lost and those that are suffering due to COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Council Brooks. So that leads us to the announcements section of our agenda tonight. And with the announcement of our twenty twenty-one Employee of the Year, Sherilyn Lambos.
Thank you very much. Um, if I could have Tom Steiger come on camera and maybe raise your hand so that it brings you to the um, to the top of the screen, that'd be awesome. I see that you are on there. Do we see? Tom, Tom. Well, um, I will go ahead and and start uh, talking and present um, and then I hopefully Tom will come on. So Twal- Twalatin's other is um, Twalatin's Employee of the Year program uh, goes back a long ways, at least thirty years, maybe more. Um, and the premise is to recognize the work and actions that bring credit to the city by city employees. Um, and improve our ability to deliver excellent service. So the nominations are made by coworkers. Uh, um, it isn't by managers or like it's not just dictated by me. Um, so your fellow employees nominate you. For twenty twenty-one Employee of the Year, there were twenty nominations submitted uh, for sixteen individuals. So some people were nominated more than once. There was at least one nomination for from every department, um, which just makes me super proud of our employees. Um, you can rest assured that our employees are high caliber. Um, great employees that care a lot about the city. So um, I know you know that and are really proud of our employees as well. Uh, twenty twenty-one, of course, was a crazy year. Uh, not only were we dealing with a pandemic and all of its trauma. We were also um, dealt a hand of crazy weather. So um, a year ago today, we were dealing with the historic ice storm and all the effects of that. We also dealt with the heat dome in the summer and um, and other things in between. Through it all, the operations of the city needed to be kept running, right? We couldn't stop um, just to deal with the next um, issue du jour. So our twenty twenty-one Employee of the Year, I'm sorry. The blessings of of Zoomland. Um, our our twenty twenty-one Employee of the Year, Tom Steiger, was in the middle of all of that. And everything that um, the year threw at us, he was right in the middle of it. He was the first responder to the ice storm. I don't think he slept for a couple of weeks. Um, he coordinated and uh, communicated and organized. He was everywhere for weeks and months. Um, Tom loves Twalatin. Um, Twalatin is just in his heart and it shows every day. He takes ownership for the parks and the public spaces and he cares for his employees and that just is embedded in the work that he does and what he brings with him. There is no one more deserving of Employee of the Year than Tom Steiger, and it is my pleasure and honor to present him to you tonight.
Thank you, Sherilyn. Congratulations, Tom. Uh, I very much appreciate all your efforts over the years. You've been around quite a while. Uh, but I want to give the floor to you and let you have some comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, it's with great pleasure that I accept this award. Uh, in the Olympic spirit, I brought the trophy home just to show it off. Here it is. So I just wanted to thank um, Sherilyn and really the entire staff at City of Twalatin through the ice storm and the weeks and months afterward. It was literally on a regular basis, twenty to thirty people were contributing, helping out, supporting, running errands, picking up sticks, cleaning up trees, and then also carrying on the business of the city. Um, so I'm the lucky one who happened to know the tree world and tree contractors and how to do that kind of work best. So it paid off well for all of us. So like Sherilyn said, I truly loved Twalatin. Everything about it, our parks are spectacular. Um, ninety-nine percent of the residents I meet are very welcoming and appreciative and understand uh, how we do our work. Um, so on behalf of myself and my staff and everyone I work with on a regular basis, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Well, we very much appreciate everything you've done. Um, and all like Cheryl mentioned, the curveballs you were throwing in the last year or so. I mean, they were coming at you left and right and you uh, kept things running and the city is very appreciative of all your efforts and your department's efforts and uh, getting all the debris off the street and dealing with uh, the heat dome. Everything that uh, you know, Cheryl mentioned is totally true. One of the things I like about you the best is the times we've crossed each other's paths and Fred Meyer is that I think one of your great traits is you're very approachable. Um, you, you know, I know you get some tough questions, but you're very patient, you know, explain things. And uh, you're very nice about it. Like you said, you know, the the approach you take is, you know, the one that we want all our city employees to do is that you're listening to a person's question, you're respectful and you usually like ninety-nine times ninety-nine times out of a hundred have an answer right away, but if you don't, you'll get back to us. So I very much appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Council Pratt, who has a proclamation.
And I just wanted to add really quick on that, um, on top of all the things the last couple of years you've dealt with that. You're ongoing and un noted, well, they're noticeable but unknown things you do, like all the work that goes into keeping those ball fields in good condition and um, I know you've many times coupled together parts to keep our playground equipment going. So I really appreciate all you do for our city. And someone's got a barking dog. Anyway, declaring Tom Steiger as Twalatin's twenty twenty-one Employee of the Year, whereas the Employee of the Year program is designed to recognize the work and actions which bring credit to the city and improve our ability to deliver excellent service to Twalatin's customers. And whereas Tom Steiger moved from Michigan to join the City of Twalatin as the Parks Maintenance Manager in May of two thousand eleven. And whereas in February twenty twenty-one, when Twalatin was hit with a historic and devastating ice storm, Tom immediately jumped into action and took the lead on the response that lasted many weeks and months. Tom went above and beyond in his response, removing countless damaged trees and limbs around the city, coordinating crews, engaging volunteers, and modeling excellent customer service. He took the initiative to ensure interdepartmental communication and cooperation throughout it all. And whereas the closure and limited use of many parks in the early days of the pandemic, Tom and his team jumped into action, showing great ability to problem solve through uncertain times. Tom consistently demonstrated how well he handles pressure and consistent constantly changing conditions, always remaining flexible and solution oriented. And whereas throughout the challenges of twenty twenty-one, Tom lived out the values of teamwork and respect. He was thoughtful, positive, and went above and beyond to be supportive. He was an inspirational coworker who maintained a can-do attitude and was always willing to explore the best case scenario, no matter what the disaster. And whereas Tom consistently demonstrates Twalatin's core values of teamwork, respect, having a one-city mindset, empowerment, problem solving, customer service, and being non-bureaucratic in a multitude of ways every day. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twalatin, Oregon, that Tom Steiger is named the twenty twenty-one City of Twalatin Employee of the Year.
Any other counselors like to make any comments? Council Brooks.
I just want to personally thank you, Tom, as well. I know that you probably remember seeing me on those days. Um, I saw you quite a few times during all the limbs being down and you're always, even when you're exhausted, you're still so friendly. Those Michigan values that we share, go wings. Yep, and um, and just are always friendly and then do all the regular stuff as well. So I just want you to know that um, that we see you and that we appreciate you and that we're so glad that you're here with us and that we know that you worked really super hard last year and we couldn't have done in the city the way that we did without you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council Sacco.
Hi, Tom. Uh, congratulations. Our paths first crossed um, when I was on T-Park and I have known you to be nothing but professional and passionate about our parks and um, as a fellow person who's passionate about our parks, I just thank you very much for your continued service to Twalatin and congratulations again.
Council President Grimes.
Congratulations, Tom. Well deserved. Um, one of my earliest memories of being on council is being at all sorts of different events at the parks in the city and Tom was always there, always working or volunteering his time. As far as I'm concerned, he's been a very, very valuable member of Team Twalatin since the day he started. So this is a very well-deserved and probably overdue award for a wonderful part of our team. So I'm glad to see the recognition. Congratulations. And I'm so happy that you're part of our team here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Council Hillier.
Tom, congratulations. Um, I certainly echo all the things that have been said. And I would like to point out your extra attention to detail, whether it's planting the little tiny ferns under the trees that didn't grow or whatever has happened. Your attention to detail and the respect of your teammates that you work with is just um, remarkable. And I think that's probably why you were nominated multiple times by your, by people on your team. And um, I just noticed that around over the years that that we've gotten to laugh and joke about different things that happen in the parks and and around our community. And I just wanted to say thank you for the big things and for all the little things that you do every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? I think that's it. All right. Well, Tom, go ahead and enjoy the rest of Valentine's evening. Thanks for joining us. If you want, you can hang around. I have for the meeting, but thanks for coming tonight. And again, congratulations and for everything you've done to make this a terrific city.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. All right, with that, moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council tonight. Regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please keep your comments to about three minutes. Uh, if there's anyone in this Zoom meeting or at the poll center would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. So Bates, we have the other folks at the poll center you mentioned. Are they here for the public hearing or for public comment?
Uh, everyone who's notified me is here for the um, Walton Heights.
Okay.
Portion.
Right. Uh, anyone in the Zoom meeting who is not uh, part of the discussion that's on the agenda later tonight, who'd like to comment? Let's see any hands go up. All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council uh, would like them removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of item number one. Consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Item two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Bridge City Golf, Inc., D B A and Vision Golf. Item three, consideration of resolution number five-five-nine-seven dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds acquiring easements the Southwest sixty-fifth slash Nyberg Cemetery Sewer Trunk Line Rehab Project. Item number four, consideration of resolution number five-five-nine-eight dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds acquiring easements for the Blake Street to one hundred and fifteenth Avenue Waterline Project. Item number five, consideration of resolution number five-six-zero-zero dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds granting easements to Washington County for the Twalton Sherwood Road Whining Project. Item number six, can, uh, item number six, consideration of resolution five-six-zero-one dash twenty-two, authorizing personnel services updates for non-represented employees on temporary schedule A for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number five-six-zero-two dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement to provide municipal court assistance to the Sea of Tiger. And finally, the item number eight, consideration of resolution number fifty-six oh four dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to enter into an I G A or intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, D L C D, to provide the city with consultant assistance for a housing implement, implement, implementation plan. Uh, or any uh, city council would like an item removed from consent tonight and uh, discussed later? All right, so do we have a motion?
A motion that we adopt the, sorry, consent agenda as read.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? Seeing none, uh, Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt. Council Brooks.
Hi.
Uh, Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And the Chair votes I also. It's unanimous. All right, moving on to special reports. Speaking of D L C D, uh, we have a special report from Steve about the Department of Land Conservation Development, D L C D, climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking process. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, fellow city councilors. Um, I'm actually going to turn it over to Cody Field, our management analyst too, for the bulk of the report. Um, and of course, should you have any questions about any specifics or implementation of the rules and regs that we're about to introduce, I'll be happy to answer those.
Welcome, Cody.
Yes, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. I'm excited to be before you this evening for my first official presentation at a council meeting since joining staff back in November. So I am going to share my screen here. Is that visible to everyone? Excellent. Um, so as noted, the topic for discussion this evening is the Department of Land Conservation and Development, climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking. I recognize that the title is a bit of a mouthful and I don't recommend trying to say it ten times fast because it's also a bit of a tongue twister. But all jokes aside, this set of administrative rules is quite complex and has potential implications for Twalatin's future land use and transportation planning efforts. So we felt it would be beneficial for you all to have a sense of what might be coming down from the state and particularly the components of these rules that may be of concern. Um, Steve is here, obviously, as he noted, to uh, provide any additional context and answer questions when necessary. Here is a quick overview of the presentation structure. I'll walk through uh, what the rulemaking is all about, where it came from. Touch quickly on the transportation planning rules, their purpose, as well as the parking regulations for new land use. Uh, then I'll give you an update on what we know so far, as well as some of the question marks and unsettled issues that are still out there. Uh, we'll review the timeline so everyone knows where we are in the process and what to expect going forward. And then we want to emphasize some potential concerns from staff's perspective. And we have also developed a short list of potential actions that you may want to consider. And of course, Steve and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. To set the stage, I wanted to provide you with some brief context and background on where these new and revised rules came from. In March of twenty twenty, Governor Brown issued Executive Order twenty dash oh four. And that was in response to the growing gap between the state's pollution reduction goals and the actual progress that had been made to achieve those goals, which from the perspective of the governor's office was concerning. Uh, the order places an emphasis on centering equity into the work of reducing climate pollution and promotes diversity, inclusion, and affordable living. Under the order, a handful of agencies were directed to take actions specifically to prioritize climate pollution reduction efforts, one of which was the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or D L C D. So in September of twenty twenty, D L C D kicked off the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking. Uh, and that was in response to the governor's executive order and with direction from the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And this rulemaking is specific to state transportation planning rules and land use regulations, which is why staff and community development began keeping an eye on it. All cities and counties in Oregon are required to have comprehensive plans and development codes that comply with the state regulations. So these plans will be in need of an update to comply with the new and revised D L C D rules. We have been primarily focused on the updates to the transportation rules, which apply to the eight metropolitan regions in the state of Oregon. The primary per- purpose of the transportation planning rules obviously is to meet the state's climate reduction goals. And the rules seek to do that by shifting focus to ensure quality options for other transportation modes like transit, biking, and walking. The rules emphasize safety for all modes of transportation and also seek to remedy the impacts of redlining, displacement, exclusionary zoning, and harm caused by public infrastructure, while also centering the voices of underserved communities. So this is the equity piece that was called out in the governor's executive order. And then finally, the rules link planning and development of transportation facilities with urban and rural development. Um, so parking, what we have learned as we've been tracking the rulemaking process is that the new parking regulations that D L C D have developed will apply to all jurisdictions across the state, including cities and counties in the Portland metro region, which wasn't abundantly clear early in the process. Now, there is an option for Metro to submit an alternative plan for parking regulations in the metro region, but at this point, it doesn't appear likely. So these are requirements we should prepare for. The deadline for adopting the parking regulations is one of the more aggressive deadlines in the rule set. Cities and counties will need to select a parking reform approach and then adopt land use regulations by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So just over a year away, which is essentially a blink of an eye these days, at least to me. Um, I wanted to draw your attention to the parking reform approaches listed here on the slide in the green boxes labeled one, two, and three. So option one is the most straightforward approach in which a community simply chooses to repeal all parking mandates. At that point, um, you're exempted from any further parking requirement. So anything listed under two or three, uh, you wouldn't have to worry about. However, if a community decides that it does not want to repeal its parking mandates, then it must select from either option two or three, which I'll define now. Just quickly, option two is uh, what they refer to as a fair parking approach. Uh, and this reduces parking mandates for certain types of development areas. Uh, includes three requirements and this gets a little confusing. So I do want to emphasize that the first three requirements here apply to both option two and three. So that would be no parking requirements for small units, affordable housing, shelters, facilities for people with disabilities, or childcare. Now, parking may be provided for those developments, but not mandated. Uh, multifamily developments are capped at one space per unit and there will be no parking mandates allowed within key areas such as corridors with frequent transit and rail stops, as well as Metro twenty forty regional centers. And I will define what the Metro twenty forty regional centers are uh, in a moment. So in addition to those three requirements, the fair parking approach has a list of options that each community can select three from that list to um, satisfy the requirement. And so some examples are unbundled parking for multi-unit residential and commercial developments, taxing of commercial parking with revenues dedicated to improving, improving transportation alternatives and uh, further parking mandates for multifamily. Option three is what they refer to as reduced parking management approach. Uh, it includes those first three rules, but then rather than the fair parking option, this approach further reduces parking mandates in a whole host of additional areas and includes requirements such as designations of residential parking districts and uh, permits or payments and time limits. So essentially what we have here is two rather complex approaches and then one relatively simple approach, but that just does away with all of a city or county's parking mandates. Skip the slide there. Sorry about that. Uh, so there are some additional best practices and regulations that are included in this set of rules, such as installation of solar panels or payments into a climate reduction fund. These all go to developments with large parking plans. Uh, that also includes installation of electrical vehicle charging capacity, uh, sufficient tree canopy to mitigate heat island effects and parking maximum near town centers and along corridors with frequent transit. So we know that these parking regulations will impact the city, but we also know that D L C D and L C D are moving forward towards adoption of these rules on either May nineteenth or twentieth. Local governments have expressed some concerns over the timeline and the League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties submitted comments on behalf of local governments requesting a delay on adoption of the rules. Mayor Bu Bennett gave us the green light to add Twalatin's logo to that letter from L O C and A O C that went in last month. Unfortunately, those comments didn't seem to change any minds as far as the timeline is concerned. I also want to reiterate that there are some requirements specific to the Portland metro region. The D L C D rules outline a process for adopting what are referred to as climate-friendly areas. These are essentially the, the higher density, walkable, mixed-use areas. Uh, your town centers, your traditional mixed-use downtowns. Um, and this applies primarily to the other seven metropolitan areas because Metro has adopted the twenty forty growth concept and climate smart strategy. So D L C D looked at those guidelines and said that this region is essentially covered in terms of what they were looking for. So rather than adopting the climate-friendly areas outlined in the rules, local governments in the metro region will comply with Metro's regional functional plan. So according to the rules, Metro is required to develop and adopt those Region twenty forty centers and land use regulations by December. those Region 2040 Centers and Land Use Regulations by December of 2024. Local governments must then comply by December 31, 2025. And I wanted to point out that Tuolton has yet to adopt its 2040 Town Center, which is here, the little yellow circle on Metro's 2040 Growth Map, which, when zoomed in, looks a bit like abstract art, but there we are. So there are currently some lingering question marks. The rules are still being modified despite just being about two weeks out from submission deadline. So there will likely be additional revisions between now and the end of the month. And I just wanted to reiterate that the transportation planning rules do apply differently in the metro region. There's a rule that will give Metro the ability to implement alternative requirements, as long as they're approved by the LCDC. So we're keeping our eye on that to make sure that we understand how that applies. In general, the transportation system planning rules align relatively closely with what Metro is already doing. DLCD is still working with Metro to make tweaks to ensure that the new rules work with what they have on the books. In terms of the transportation system plan updates, at this point, the DLCD rules require an extensive review process for any TSP updates which add capacity. And there was a lot of concern over this during the development of the rules. One workaround is that they have an exception list that they've included, and that is still a work in progress. The list is aimed at exempting smaller projects like roundabout or left-turn lane, so that cities and counties don't have to go through an entire TSP update just for some small project like that. And any TSP update is going to require funding and technical support. DLCD has promised that resources will be available for local governments, but they haven't specified what exactly that'll look like. At this point, we've heard that there might be $15 million from the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill allocated through ODOT to help local governments, so that those required TSP updates aren't just an unfunded mandate. But we don't know how exactly that will filter down to us. And Metro is on the record saying that 15 million isn't really sufficient for all the local governments to update their TSPs. So a quick look at the timeline. At the end of the month, DLCD will submit a draft rules to the Secretary of State, which will be published on March 1. On either March 31 or April 1 is the first official public hearing at the two-day LCDC meeting, although I'm hearing that it'll likely be March 31 for that hearing. Then on May 19 or May 20, they'll hold the final public hearing and rule adoption, after which the deadlines listed below on the slide will go into effect. So those parking and electric vehicle charging requirements in March of 2023. The metro update to the Regional Functional Plan due by December of 2024, and then city and county compliance by December 31 of 2025. So we have identified some potential concerns for Tuolton that jumped out as we've been tracking this process. It's primarily the overly prescriptive limitations on local transportation projects, which add capacity to the transportation system, the minimum parking requirements or overly prescriptive alternatives, which may have new financial impacts on either new development or redevelopments, and particularly on businesses. Many jurisdictions feel that the draft rules lack sufficient clarity on how the proposed transportation planning rules would be implemented on local governments. And it's unclear what impact those rules would have on previous plans adopted between now and 2025. So for example, if the city completed an update to the transportation system plan or urban renewal plan prior to 2025, what happens when these new rules go into effect? So that's something we're keeping our eye on. And then, of course, cost of implementation of those rules, including staff time and consultants, is of concern as well. So we've put together a list of potential actions for you to consider. I wanted to emphasize, we're not asking you to vote on anything today. This is just all for your information. Option A would be to provide written or verbal testimony to the LCDC at one of the official public hearings, so on either March 31 and then one of those May 19 or 20 dates. My assumption is that by mid-May, those rules are probably going to be done and dusted. So I'd probably recommend shooting for the March 31 date if you wanted to use this option. Option B would be to sign on with one or more regional jurisdictions who are already planning to provide comment, much like we did with the League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties' letter last month. Of course, you could do a combination of A or B. And then the final option would be you could choose to not provide any testimony and just allow staff to continue monitoring the process. Just to conclude, I wanted to state that this presentation was designed to provide a pretty broad overview, so you have a basic sense of what's going on and to ensure you that staff have been monitoring this rulemaking process closely and will continue to do so. As noted, it's a complicated set of rules. It's over 100 pages. And it's trying to accomplish a goal of high importance, but these rules may present some unique hurdles for local governments. And of course, if there's any specific details that I touched on that pique your interest or raised any red flags, I'd be happy to do a deep dive into the rules and pull out any additional information for you. The final rules are still a bit of a moving target, so we are eager to see what comes out on March 1 when the rules are published and the official public comment period begins. And unless Steve has anything to add to that, I would be happy to open it up for questions at this point.
Just briefly, to reiterate something that you just said, Cody, just for the council's benefit, is that these rules are very extensive, and they have been, to some extent, a moving target as far as their development, I think, as Cody highlighted really well. And so if that presentation came across as a little bit technical and dry, please be assured that we did our best to distill it down to identify those issues that we felt were most important to you. And so again, we're happy to engage in a conversation and try to break it down so that it's not so technical, but please just bear with us.
Well, thanks, Steve and Cody. Just as a side note, remember over the weekend, I shot you the letter that was sent from AOC/LOC that our logo on in regards to this rulemaking process. A page letter, and majority of which asking for changes, enhancements, and clarification on some of these rules, as Cody and Steve were saying. It can get a little bit mind-numbing when you read this stuff, but the implications are big, especially when it comes to transportation system planning and parking regulations within the city. And my big, you know, a lot of folks saying, well, you know, Metro's got us covered. I'm sure I'm not the only one who always is not very comfortable when someone tells me Metro's got us covered. So, because their view of a livable community and our view of a livable community are pretty distinct sometimes. Council President Grimes heard a little hand motions there. Yep, but opening the floor for questions for Steve and/or Cody. Council Pratt, and then Council Brooks.
Yeah, hi, Cody and Stephen. Thank you for the presentation. They're good ideas.
I think she's breaking up. We might have to go switch over to Council Brooks. You back, Council Pratt? Hey, let's go back to Council Brooks. We'll go back to Council Pratt.
Thanks, Cody, for your first presentation, and Steve. And I guess my, I had just, I sat in on some of those rulemaking hearings and have followed along, so it's not a surprise to me. This has been going on for a very long time. My curiosity is with the scope of the rules, we're talking a lot about parking, but what other, what percentage of the rule changes is parking?
I would say that the parking is a small but very important part of the rule set. It's one of the, it's one of the pieces that we know for sure are going to impact us, and we can take a look at what those impacts are. Some of the others, as I noted, are still a bit in flux, especially how the transportation system planning is going to work in theory. But we do know that those parking regulations are going to have an impact. And so that's why we kind of drill down into that specific topic.
Okay, so, because I think it's really important to understand that the rules, there's a lot of rules, and there's some really good things that are going on and some things that I just want to acknowledge our city has really on track about and that we are ahead of the game. And so I just want to appreciate the leadership in our city for, for it not being as catastrophic, so to speak, for us as it is for some other cities. That being said, my other question is, a lot of these rules, it's just so hard here in Tuolton without a robust public transportation system. So, and the other piece that I understand is that this is about pollution reduction. So as the population moves to different modes of transportation, I'm just curious how much impact this has if, for instance, there's a lot more people driving electric vehicles, for instance. And if those kinds of, is this really about greenhouse gas measurement? Or is this about something that we think? And that being said, I don't want to mix my concern for, I mean, we are behind the game in greenhouse gases. It's costing our city a lot of money with catastrophic, you know, storms. And we had the hottest stand record just the other day in Palm Springs. So I do think that there is a real, you know, sunset moment that we're all kind of looking at. So it's not to not say the importance of these things, but how, how much impact it is. So I appreciate you bringing this to us. And also, I would love to hear about some of the ways that we're going to be meeting these new rules that we actually are in line with as well, and so that we can give a shout out to our city for the leadership that we're doing that isn't, that goes along with these climate change actions. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And regarding your question, as people begin to switch to electric vehicles, there's quite a few instances in this set of rules where they are trying to encourage jurisdictions to expand their electric vehicle charging, because that is one way in which the DLCD believes that they can make an impact. And so that's definitely another piece that we're keeping our eye on, just how extensive those land use regulations might be. I know that at this point, any electric vehicle charging would be just the conduit to add capacity to new developments. They've found that retrofitting existing developments is prohibitively expensive, so they didn't put that in the requirement, but that's definitely something we will see.
Do we have something in the new developments for housing that encourages or supports the developers, including charging in the garages and things like that in our code?
Not specifically at this point. There was talk of potentially that being something that would be included through building codes rather than land use.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think what you're seeing from these rules is that DLCD is taking on its mandate from the governor and trying to push wherever possible. And so you have these hodgepodge of rules that affecting different things that I think are all with the same goal in mind. And so in regards to development of the parking regulations, I mean, that's something that's going to, of course, come back before the council. And I think that we can hopefully, that you have confidence in us as staff to kind of wade through those rules and come back to you with ones that make as most sense for Tuolton as possible. And then on the, on the transportation system planning part, we are, as a city within Metro, we're required to comply with their regional transportation plan. And so, similar to the way that we've always done it, you know, we'll go through those motions to ensure compliance. And then, of course, as Cody mentioned, some of those kind of pushing it at being able to do smaller, but impactful to us, I think, transportation updates and upgrades, pushing for our ability to keep doing those without heavy lifting, I think, is going to be critical as well.
I appreciate that. And I just want to say one further thing that this, these rules around with families and limitations, it just, to me, seems that will impact people in just the opposite way that they're trying to do so with further marginalizing people that needed more affordable housing and families, which is the opposite of the goals that we want for attracting work, you know, affordable housing and families and people being able to live here into retirement and age in place as well. So those concerns, I feel deeply, and I appreciate you bringing this information to us. Thank you again.
One of the frustrations that Cody alluded to with, in terms of the Washington County mayors and the Washington County Courting Committee, is the, what we think is overly aggressive timeline. Why is this in such a rush? Why won't they slow the process down and the rulemaking to listen to local governments? Because you're going to have the urban rule divide, Eastern Oregon versus Western Oregon. Imagine if you're a city council in Pendleton, and these are coming down the pipe at you, and how you're going to further develop Pendleton. And it just seems, it's shocking to me that they're totally deaf to just request, you know, slow this down a little bit, give us more time to look at this, revise the rules, work in conjunction. But it seems like they've got a target in mind when they want to get these out the door, which is just frustrating. So other questions or comments? Because I do want to get back to the question Steve and Cody had about Option A, Option B, both Option A and B, so other comments or questions for Steve and Cody? I think Valerie, are you back, Valerie, or Council Pratt? She keeps coming in and out. I think she's frozen again. Okay, so other questions? All right, so let's circle back to the discussion, that slide of A or B. Certainly, I know B is, oh, she's moving again. So Council Pratt, you're back. So I know you had a question. Let's go back to you. You're muted.
Yeah, I keep getting kicked off, so sorry. I just, my big concern is, I mean, there's some good things in this, but the, like, the three parking approaches, I looked at those rules, and they're extensive, and they're, you know, requirements, and we have to do this and that, and require employers to do things. And the second approach, and the third approach, is that's some, there's a lot of details in it. So I guess what I'm asking is, at some point, maybe when the rules are moved forward in March, if you would send those out to us so we can see. I mean, I know, I see how this thing is cumbersome, and so you did a great job of overviewing it. But at some point, we really need, like, I'm thinking of Council Grimes here. Option B says you can only have, on multifamily residential, you can only have a half-space per unit. So now we've got Northeast Portland with people parking on the streets and blocking businesses. So that's my big concern with this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to pull out some additional details and try to bullet point those so they're a little more clear and you can really see what the impacts would be from each of those options. And so you could take a closer look at it and spend some time with those details and not have to dig through the kind of cumbersome, scary-looking rule set, which I've been staring at as well. It can make you dizzy.
Yeah. Right, so on the options A and B, obviously, I know B is a definite for me that sometime, you know, the weight and heft of AOC and LOC letter might get a little bit more attention than, you know, a letterhead from us, but it never hurts. And working in conjunction with AOC and LOC, when it does come time for testimony, if they ask for people to step up and give verbal testimony or send additional letters, I think all of us, we definitely would want to be, you know, involved with and be happy to provide that kind of written testimony and verbal testimony that might help address some of our concerns with this plan. Are folks in, on board with that?
Can you remind us what the options are again? I'm sorry.
It was.
The other options.
Well, there was a provide written or verbal testimony at the hearing at one of the ones that I think Cody's right. If we don't do it in March, we're going to miss it. So it's going to be done in March. So I'm assuming that LOC and AOC will have a whole bunch of people lined up to do that. And it might be one of us or multiple of us. And item number B, option B is to sign on, you know, letters like we did regionally. So if, you know, Clarkland County puts a letter together or Washington County, you know, legal Oregon cities, Association of Oregon counties, that we have either our logo on it or my signature on it as a co-signer on the letter to advocate on behalf of our community. All right, so any other questions for Steve or Cody? I give you credit, Cody, for your first presentation diving into something like this. This trial by fire for you, man. Welcome to the, the team.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
All right. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Let me scroll back up here in my agenda. I believe it's Jerian, if I'm remembering right. Where am I at? Yes, if so, our illustrious library director will give us a presentation on the library strategic planning. Welcome, Jerian.
Thank you so much. Hi, Mayor and councilors. Let me share my screen. Just a second for that. Let me try that again, sorry. There we go. All right, so, um, as the mayor said, I'm here tonight to talk to you about strategic planning in the library. Twalton Library has been engaged in a process since last fall to update our strategic plan. So tonight I'm going to review the high points of what we heard in our community engagement and staff discussions and present our draft strategic priorities for the next three years. A strategic plan is essential to provide guidance in making decisions about how we allocate resources. A good strategic plan will let everyone, including our staff and our patrons, know what the library's direction is and how we plan to get there. It becomes the foundation upon which we build our budget, develop our programs and introduce new services, as well as potentially sunsetting programs or services that are no longer priorities. The library's last strategic planning process was conducted in 2016 with support from a consultant. During that process, we revised the library's mission statement to this, empowering and enriching our community through learning, discovery and interaction. The current planning process was completely conducted by city staff. In October, library staff participated in a few exercises to refresh our department's values. These values are guiding principles for our day-to-day work and describe the culture we strive for in the library. They include collaboration, we succeed through cooperation and empowered teamwork, compassion, we operate with kindness, empathy and understanding, inclusion, we believe public libraries are for everyone and strive to foster a sense of community, and service, we place an emphasis on friendly customer service and user experiences. Also in October, we conducted a survey of library users. Two hundred and sixty-five people participated. Respondents identified the library services they used most often and rated our customer service with ninety-six percent rating our customer service as good to excellent. Survey participants also ranked the importance of various library services, which you can see on this chart. The more green and dark blue present, the higher the ranking. The most important services we offer according to the ranking are connecting readers to books, supporting childhood reading, supporting lifelong learning for adults, supporting the educational success of youth and building a sense of community. In the fall, I conducted a series of nine interviews with stakeholders in our community who represented schools, social service agencies, the business community, the city and the mayor. These were the takeaways from those interviews. First, we heard that students are in a greater need for homework, reading and math support. This is because a lot of students unfortunately fell behind last year when school year was all virtual. We heard that isolation and the need for socialization are big issues for older adults. Those are also concerns for houseless populations and low-income families. We heard the Latino residents often don't know about library services and resources. For example, many don't know that they can call the library with simple questions and get help with reference or research information. We heard that small business owners need training support and that access to technology is important for students, the workforce and individuals experiencing homelessness. In December, we held three focus groups with thirteen participants. We asked them to identify our strengths and areas where we needed to improve. For strengths, they said that library staff are friendly and helpful. The library is in a convenient location and has a welcoming feel. People like the access we provide to the broader WCCLS collection and our outreach to the community was also highlighted. For improvement areas, they said we need to do a better job getting the word out about library programs and services to create broader awareness about what is available. We also heard a strong desire for the library to return to offering in-person programs and the suggestion that we need more parking. We asked what they saw as the role of the library in the community. And we heard that the library is the central hub for the community, providing a place to bring people together and providing access to resources. Our encouragement of reading and supporting learning for all ages were also important roles. Finally, we asked what the library should do more of in the future. Overwhelmingly, we heard ideas and suggestions for library programs and events with a desire for more activities on the weekend for working families, as well as seeing the Makerspace open more hours each week. We held a fourth focus group with Spanish-speaking community members that had eight participants. Latino residents described the library as welcoming, friendly and accessible with our strengths, including Spanish language collection and signage, and that we offer community meeting space. In needs of improvement, we again heard marketing and communication, particularly targeted to Spanish speakers, as well as several program ideas. They saw the role of the library in the community as a safe space, a place to belong and being a source for learning and information. We also asked about the issues in our community that have a direct effect on Latino families. They identified language learning, communication and access to and representation on city council. Finally, they suggested that in the future, we should offer more Spanish language programs and better promote all library programs for families. In January, we reviewed the results of our community engagement with staff and with the Twalton Library Advisory Committee. Through those discussions, the following themes emerged. As I said a moment ago, we heard very loudly that we would like, that the community would like to see us return to offering in-person programs. And that's something we're actively working towards doing this spring. We heard a need to improve our marketing and community awareness and to continue supporting community connection. We need to increase bilingual staff and communications, support learning and personal development for all ages and create opportunities for fun. Based on these themes, we have drafted these new strategic priorities for the library. These priorities were reviewed by the Library Advisory Committee at their meeting earlier this month. Once adopted, these priorities will guide our work for the years 2022 through 2025. First, we have foster community connection. This is about connecting people to each other. We do this by having a welcoming library space and welcoming staff. We also accomplish this through programs that offer opportunity for social interaction. Our community outreach is important to meeting this strategic priority, as is providing volunteer opportunities. Next, we have encouraged learning and exploration. This is about personal development and trying new things. And it's really the bread and butter of what we do at Twalton Library. It encompasses a wide range of our programming, including early childhood literacy or helping children learn to read, K through twelve learning support and lifelong learning and personal growth opportunities for adults. The library collection plays a strong role in this strategic priority as well as through the collection, you are offered opportunities for education and entertainment. The Makerspace also falls squarely within this strategic priority. Third, we have promote discovery and access. This is about increasing awareness of our library programs and services. And it's also about connecting people with ideas and resources. One of the ways we will accomplish this is through bilingual communication targeting English and Spanish speakers. Our customer service is also an important part of this strategic priority as the interactions that patrons have with library staff provide an access point to our collection, our services and our programs. Last but not least, we have support community inclusion. This is about strengthening the fabric of our community. We can accomplish this by offering culturally relevant programs as well as by doing bilingual outreach in the community, making sure that people in our community have access to our programs and services, even if they're not able to visit the library in person. Engagement with marginalized populations will be important under this priority, as will staff training to make sure that the library remains a welcoming place for individuals. Following your feedback, we will adopt the strategic priorities and began communicating them to the public. The next steps in the strategic planning process will be to identify goals and action items for the next fiscal year to help us operationalize the strategies. Once developed, library management will take that plan back to the Library Advisory Committee for their review and recommendation. With that, I'm happy to hear your feedback and any questions that you may have. And I'll stop sharing screens so we can all see each other again.
Thanks, Jerian. Questions for Jerian? Council Brooks and then Council Pratt.
Thank you for the presentation, just the update. And I'm not surprised if people want to get back to the library. And I still haven't seen the Makerspace. My question was, what is the most, and I know that must be in person. I'm just curious what the most popular activity at the new Makerspace looks like these days?
Well, there's, people have been doing a lot of different things in the Makerspace. I'd say 3D printing is probably the most popular thing, providing access to our 3D printers. But we certainly have people coming in and just doing creative projects using art supplies, even just basic art supplies in the room. So it's really neat to see the range from non-technical to technical projects in the space.
Thanks, thanks again for the support or the report. And, and I, what I was going to say is that I also really appreciate the focus towards the support of students, especially with such a hard year that we've just gone through. So thank you so much for keeping the community feeling even during these difficult times, Jerian.
Thank you.
Council Pratt?
Hi, Jerian. That was really insightful, I thought, with the students, like Council Brooke mentioned. And then the, the need to just let our people in our, I always see the feeds on Facebook, like you, how you guys have some cool stuff. But just the need to outreach to our entire community to let them know there's great things out there and it's free. It's wonderful. So I really appreciate the effort you put into getting that input from our community.
Thank you. Marketing is a perpetual problem for libraries. It's not unique to us. It's something that a lot of public libraries struggle with because we offer so many things. It's really hard to communicate it all to the public.
Other questions or comments for Jerian? All right, I, I think you did a terrific job on your presentation and the plan. I think you hit all the key items I hear about in the community. And I was thinking, when you're giving a presentation and marketing, 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 that's everyone's challenge. And getting the message out and getting a message out that connects with your, the different populations that you're trying to reach out to. So I have a feeling that that'll be your challenge. But the library has been a terrific place for us to gather over the years. You have a terrific staff. You're doing a terrific job. And I look forward again to in-person events. Like I know story time is always a big thing for parents and young children. So once we get those things going again, it'll be probably a little bit easier to get your message out and get a lot more input on this plan. And I think it, it looked great. And I love that last picture, that last slide. That's a terrific photo for that angle, the colors and stuff. It shows off the library very nice. But thanks for coming tonight and I look forward to hearing more about the plan and how you're going to implement it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, so that brings us to our first public hearing of the night. This is a public hearing on ordinance number one four six four dash twenty-two to rezone the twelfth and Heitz apartment site located at nine three zero one Southwest Sagard Street for the medium-low residential RML zoning district to the medium-high density residential RMH zoning district. This is a reminder, this is a continuance of the public hearing that was started on January twenty-fourth. So in these past two weeks, I have to ask, do anyone on city council have any ex parte contacts or conflicts that have arisen since our last hearing on this subject? All right, does anyone need to abstain on this subject? All right, so the agenda for tonight's hearing will be the staff will give you a presentation. Following the presentation, the proponent or the applicant will state their case. We'll then have, give the opportunity for people to speak in favor of the ordinance. Those opposed and any other interested folks, those people giving statements in favor, opposition or other interest. Remember, the time limit is three minutes for comments. Ted and Steve, turn this over to Steve to present the city's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Popper, Assistant Community, and everyone's. The first couple of slides of the presentation are materials that the council has seen before, but just for the benefit of any additional public, I understand there's some at the pole center and there may be some out there in Zoom land. We'll just go through the proposal and a couple of additional slides to orient ourselves. So the applicant is requesting a rezone of the subject property. It's a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-low density residential to medium-high density residential. As it notes on the slide, future development would be subject to subsequent approval of an architectural review application, which would include submission of an additional traffic impact assessment at this time. Obviously, that would be subject to approval of this application first. The subject property is located on the north side of Sagard Street, just east of Southwest Ninety-Fifth Avenue. And the zoning, you see on the left-hand side of the slide, the existing RML zoning surrounded by RML to the east, RL to the south, and then industrial zoning to the north and west. The right-hand side of the slide shows the proposed RMH zoning. So it would, to some degree, buffer some of the other residential uses from the industrial uses that abut the subject site. Conceptual redevelopment plan. So the applicant provided this in their materials, just showing this for the benefit of council. And just reiterating that this plan is intended to show that the proposed zoning results, or excuse me, that there is a feasible plan that the applicant could develop on the subject site with the. or excuse me, that there is a feasible plan that the applicant could develop on the subject site with the existing development and meet the applicable standards of the zone. It's not intended to be a final plan. It's merely an exercise to demonstrate that there's no development restrictions of the site that would stand in the way of it meeting the development standards of the new zone. I'd also just note that the applicant demonstrated as part of this conceptual plan that they could quite substantially overpark the site relative to the required minimum parking. So under the proposed units they used for this plan, it'd be required to park 475 minimum spaces, and they've shown the ability to fit 548 spaces on the, onto the site. So this is where I'm going to add some additional content to our conversation for tonight, just to provide a little bit of wayfinding. Where are we in the process? So this is very early in the overall development cycle in total. We're at the comprehensive plan amendment stage. So where this comprehensive plan amendment be, to be approved by the council and the ordinance adopted, the applicant would have to go through architectural review, and I'll talk a little bit more about what the architectural review process is comprised of in a couple slides. Assuming architectural review was approved, the applicant would have to go through engineering and building review, and so that's where they would look at provision of public utilities in the case of engineering, and then building review would look at compliance with fire, life, and safety building codes. And then finally, the process, the development cycle process ends with construction of the actual additional units, and then final inspections to ensure that all of the standards were complied with. And so the, the core of the question that the council is being posed tonight by this text amendment is whether or not the proposed change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so as you can see in green, the Twolton Comprehensive Plan nests under the statewide planning goals at the top, and then offshoots of the statewide planning goals are the Oregon Administrative Rules, which are more specific rules and regulations that implement the statewide planning goals. And then as a city in the metro area, we also sit under the umbrella of the Metro Functional Plan, which has some additional ways in which Metro has decided that rules and regulations that would satisfy those statewide planning goals. And then our actual comprehensive plan itself is our own local take when viewed through the lenses of the Oregon Administrative Rules and the Metro Functional Plan of how we in Twolton believe we comply with the statewide planning goals. And then subsequently, the Twolton Comprehensive Plan is implemented more specifically through the Twolton Development Code. And I draw your attention to the left-hand side of the slide, just to recap what the staff role is in the process and the council role. And so the staff role is to make findings based on the evidence in the record. This is a quasi judicial hearing. And so our role is to try to weigh the evidence for the council and point out where it exists on either side of this question. Is the proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan? And then we make a findings and analysis, which is in your packet, and has a lot more detail that talks about why and how the proposal conforms to, in this case is our conclusion, but conforms or doesn't conform to the criteria. And then the council role is to decide whether or not the proposed change in zoning to medium-high density residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we've drawn attention to what we believe is the pertinent evidence in the record in this quasi judicial hearing, but it's the council's role ultimately to weigh the evidence that's in that record and come to a conclusion. So I'm just going to give a couple of examples of the plan amendment criteria from those findings. I'm not going to talk about all of them in detail. They're in the packet. But just a couple to highlight how the process works. And so one of the, I think, most important criteria for a plan amendment is that granting the plan amendment is in the public interest. And so some of example, and this is excerpted and highlighted from the actual findings, is the proposed change in zoning is in the public interest and that facilitates opportunity for construction of new dwelling units. That is to say that, and I'll get to this in a second, but essentially the public interest is a need for housing. And so this proposal works to satisfy that by providing a zoning that would allow for construction more housing units. And then also the proposed change satisfies a need identified in the housing needs analysis, which was created with extensive public planning commission and city council input. And so therefore, a zoning change that's consistent with the housing needs analysis, which was adopted and is part of the comprehensive plan, is itself in the public interest. And then again, just to further buttress or support what you saw in that previous slide, just a reminder that specifically in actual mathematical terms, the need for medium-high density housing was quantified in the housing needs analysis. And so there is currently a deficit of seven gross acres of land or 109 dwelling units, and that's a rough calculation. And so this proposal would help satisfy that deficit. Here's another example criteria from the plan amendment criteria is that the amendment conforms with the Twolton Community Plan. So that is to say that the change conforms with the goals and policies of the Twolton Community Plan, also known as the Comprehensive Plan. So the first response here is the proposed zone change meets chapter three of the Comprehensive Plan. That is to say that it's consistent with it. It doesn't conflict with any parts of it, and then is also consistent with other parts of the Comprehensive Plan. In other words, it doesn't have, there's no element of the proposal that staff identified that directly conflicts with the chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. So a couple of checkbox items. One of the specific pieces of the Twolton Community Plan or Comprehensive Plan that was called out that this proposal, I would say can, not only conforms with, but also helps to satisfy, is a call to evaluate opportunities to increase development density to address the deficiencies identified in the housing needs analysis within Twolton's existing zones. And then the second call out specifically in the Comprehensive Plan is to evaluate opportunities to rezone land to provide additional opportunities for multifamily housing development. And so it's just simply more density and more multifamily housing development. It's not specifically affordable housing. There are affordable housing goals and policies in the Comprehensive Plan. This proposal, you know, is not specifically a regulated affordable housing proposal, but it just still does satisfy certain policies of the Comprehensive Plan. And just a quick, this is a slide that the council has seen before, but just to refresh on the Comprehensive Plan versus the Development, Development Code, and I'm not going to get into detail and read all of it, but suffice it to say the Comprehensive Plan is a list of the city's high-level goals and policies. As I mentioned in a couple of preceding slides, it's also how Twolton complies with state and metro regulations. But it's, it's again, it's a local expression of that. It's the Twolton way of doing so. And so we have a couple of example of a goal and a policy to meet the goal there, which relate to the need for housing identified in the HNA, the Housing Land Supply. And then there's a policy to meet the goal. And then turning over to the Development Code, the Development Code is a series of measurable and specific standards and is measurable and specific standards of how the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies are implemented. And so you see a couple of examples of implementation, but it's essentially a zoning district would be one example, and then the development standards that would apply in a specific zoning district would be another way that the Development Code specifically implements the Comprehensive Plan. And so again, at issue tonight is whether or not the proposal is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, not whether or not the proposal is or could be made consistent with the Development Code. That would be a separate line of inquiry. Thinking about, just for the council's benefit, what is within the purview of the Architectural Review? So what would happen? What would city staff and/or the Architectural Review Board, depending on the scope of the proposal, look at in a future Architectural Review? And so I mentioned a couple of those previously. They'd be the development standards of the zone itself, which includes setbacks, height, and some other things. There are these 73 series of chapters A, B, and C that look at site design standards. So there's some outdoor, like play area requirements that are specific to multifamily housing, internal vehicle and pedestrian circulation, so how to get people around safely within the site. There's landscaping standards, a minimum percentage of site landscaping, and then just some, some minutia, but I think important details on what type of plantings and what size things need to be and so forth, requiring irrigation so that the landscape doesn't go dry, things like that. I think the council well knows that parking standards, a number of spaces, and then also some parking lot landscaping standards are applicable to new development or significant redevelopment projects, which this would fall into that latter category. And then we did hear some testimony in the previous hearing, so I think it's worth highlighting that there are waste and recyclables standards that are development code standards, which include a sign-off from the garbage hauler that the location of the receptacles are accessible to them and that they have a safe and efficient route for picking up those things. And then there's some screening, and then there's minimum adequacy standards, which is basically sizing relative to the size of the, of the receptacles relative to the size of the development. And then there's chapter 74 and 75. I mentioned at the top of the presentation that there's going to be another traffic study required at the time of a development proposal, and then there's some minimum access standards. We had some questions about whether or not there could be additional access points granted to help spread out the traffic, and so that would be looked at through that set of standards. I think the other thing that I should also note at at this slide is that there are some other code provisions which are within the municipal code, you know, relating to nuisances or other kinds of things which are not development code standards, which should also be applicable to this site development. The last thing I think is worth noting or reiterating perhaps is that at the end of the day, the, an apartment complex effectively operates to some degree like a commercial business. And so to the extent that people who are residents and of the apartment complex or just a service that they're being provided, they're at some of the city codes, but in relationship between the two people in the contractual relationship. And obviously, there's, there are certain remedies there, which I won't get into, but just making that part of the menu choices. In conclusion, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the proposed plan amendment, and I know that our Planning Commission Chair Bill Beers, who is unable to make it to our last meeting, is actually here in the audience tonight, should the council be interested in hearing from his perspective. And then also just a couple final notes that based on the findings and analysis that are in your packet, staff recommends that the proposed rezone is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. And that finally, council approval of the subject text amendment and adoption of ordinance 146422 would apply the proposed medium-high density residential zoning district to the site. I'm going to jump out of screen share. And happy to answer any questions about the presentation at this point, or turn it back to you, Mayor, for you to turn it over to the applicant.
How about Mr. Beers? Bill, are you there?
I am, Mayor.
So can you present what your, the Planning Commission thought about the application?
Yeah, indeed. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I apologize for being unable to make it last time. The short version is, is that it's a planned map amendment, and so the, the scope in like our purview is very limited, like on what we, what our criteria was for approval. And so we looked at those criteria, each of them, leading up to the meeting and then during the meeting, and found that basically all of them were satisfied, and the ones that really stood out to us were adding more VM high density residential and not having to come up with more land to do that. And then that would also add a diversity of housing types. Because realistically, I think that's, it can only be studios or one bedrooms where they're planning to do that on their site. I, I know that's not a for-real site plan yet, but that was, in my mind, that was underlying what was going on there. Since I, since it wasn't a quasi judicial hearing for us, I could go out and talk to people and have that ex parte contact. So I talked to some of the folks in the neighborhood and like the comments you received were, it's mostly parking and it stems from that Twolton Heights decision to start charging for those extra spots. And when that happened, it, it appears that that traffic spilled out into the neighborhood. Like, and before that meeting, I called around to the other apartment complexes in town, and most of them responded. I, I had a few that didn't call back, but almost universally none of them charged for their extra spots. Because that was my experience when I was a renter, and I think maybe that is changing as rental folks realize they can charge for that, or some people that don't have cars think, why do I need to pay for a space? But it, the remedy that we saw as a planning commission to the people there that live in the low-density residential south of the site was some kind of permitted parking area, and we had some rough bounds that we thought about. I didn't learn until after the meeting that that needs to be initiated by members of that community. Like, I don't think it can come top down. It has to come up. So, but I think that's the remedy that they're seeking, and I think if they had that, those folks would be much more on board with this. But looking on just the criteria, the applicable criteria, we voted unanimously that this is the right thing for Twolton to do, looking forward towards 2040.
Thanks, Mr. Beers. All right, I'm going to hold off on questions until we hear from the proponent and the applicant. So I'm not too sure who's representing the applicant today.
Hello, I'm John Magru with Henneberry Eddy Architects. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Okay, so Frank Anzola with Angelo Planning made our presentation last month, and, well, first, I'm sorry, thank you for having us again and appreciate the opportunity to share what's going on. Frank's not available tonight, and I'm a far inferior stand-in. Sorry about that. But we don't actually have a plan. We don't have any additional information to present beyond what was presented at the last meeting, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions that come up. But we, I think the presentation and our information is, is the same as it was last time we were here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Magru. All right, with that, I'll, I'm going to open the floor. Remember, I said before, persons in favor, three minutes each. Persons who are opposed to the ordinance, three minutes each. Other interested folks, and then we'll give an opportunity for the applicant to rebut any comments that they feel they need to address. So with that, I'll open the floor to folks who are in favor of the application and the ordinance.
Mayor, we've been given no notice in favor, so and just unless there's somebody in the audience who hasn't mentioned us.
All right. So going once, twice. All right, I'll now open the floor to persons who are opposed to this ordinance and this application, and remember, three minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, in the poll center, we have four folks and then two online. So first up is Ryan Henderson.
Hi, I live about three houses south of the complex, and parking is a significant problem. If you look at the Google one-star reviews, most of them talk about parking. Parking is terrible. The parking rules are BS. There's no parking spaces for residents. Parking is terrible. There's about 11 reviews over the last couple of years. And the parking has spilled out into the streets, and it's a problem for me because at any time, there's half a dozen cars parked in front of my house covering both sides of the road. It makes it unsafe for my kids to cross the road, difficult for me to back out. People are blocking our trashcans and our mailboxes. And I can call to get these people towed, but there's a steady stream of cycle of cars, and I get the noise from them early in the morning. And it takes three days before they can be towed, a couple of days for Twolton PD to respond, and then another five days for the tow truck to show up. And then I get to hear tow trucks hauling away cars early in the morning. So unless there's a significant plan to address the parking density, this will continue to spill out into the street and bother the residents. Some of the cars have not been called to be towed because you can tell the street sweepers have been sweeping around them. They've been there for months. So we definitely need to solve the parking problem before we can expand the density of this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mayor is Patrick Lanning. Next up, mayor is uh Patrick Lanning.
Good evening, members. Uh, my name is Patrick Lanning. Uh, my family and I live at two zero zero five five southwest ninety third. Right on the corner of uh ninety third and Sagert. Um. My biggest concern here, the, the reason I oppose this is uh reckless driving that I've noticed occurring. I think it's a direct result of a while back, Twelton Heights eliminated a lot of their visitor parking. And as a result, of course, people had to park on Sagert and ninety third, park in front of my house, which is not an issue. Uh, parking in front of my house, not an issue at all. The issue is. The increased amount of garbage and trash in my yard, and when they come back to their cars midnight, one o'clock in the morning, they. Tend to play loud music for a while before they take off, disrupting my family. Now, I'm sure this goes on everywhere in every neighborhood, it's not that big a deal, but the biggest deal I have is the reckless driving. Um. It's the visitors in this, in the complex, because the rec-. My house gives me a unique view of the neighborhood, I have a, a view of the uh. Entrance to, both entrances to uh Twelton Heights, and I also have the main artery from the north into the, my section of the neighborhood. And I can tell you, it's not the residents of the neighborhood that are driving reck- recklessly, and it's not the majority of the tenants. That are driving recklessly, it's the visitors that are coming, that are driving recklessly, uh, and. I've come to the conclusion it's because they get frustrated, there isn't convenient or close parking to the complex. So they rip up and down ninety third at forty miles an hour, it's exactly why my daughter won't ride her bike in the street. I have a neighbor with two small boys, won't ride their bikes in the street for that reason. Um, they, they drive recklessly. Um. A while back, we, you know, it slowed down some because apparently there was, there was a traffic officer, a motor officer around the corner. And every time somebody got pulled over, they got pulled over in front of my house. Um, so uh, yeah, and it slowed down the reckless driving for a bit, and it was nice to see, I'm happy to see that. Uh, because that particular intersection, i- i- it can be a little bit dangerous at times, uh, when people get frustrated with the lack of parking. They tend to park illegally in that intersection with their vehicles protruding into the lane of traffic. I've had them park, double park um on ninety third, there's a. Dirt strip between the street and the sidewalk in front of my house, they park there all the time, great. Uh, but I've had them park in the lane of travel on ninety third, park there, and leave the car overnight. Had that happen a few times, had a guy uh block my driveway, and when I confronted him, he actually threatened me. Uh, but you know, it was resolved simply enough. Um, but. I think I pretty much said everything I need to say, that's, that's my number one concern. Um, you know, I, I feel like I'm in a unique position because I'm right there in the middle of it. Um, I see everything that goes in and out of that apartment complex, and. I've identified several people that live there that drive recklessly, but not too bad. But it's usually the cars that I don't see again, uh, that part, that. Ripping up and down ninety third, and like I said, I'm retired, I spend a lot of time looking out the window. Um, I tend to see the same people every day, but they drive nice, and the people I don't see every day are the ones ripping up and down the street. Um.
Alright, well, that's.
I don't know what else to say other than that's my concern.
Alright, I, we appreciate your comments.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, mayor, next up it's uh Timothy Henderson.
Good evening, mayor and council, this is my mother, oh, well, my mother's back here too, she lives in the same house, we're at ninety two hundred. On the corner of Apache and Sagert, um, facing Sagert Street, so we see, like Pat, we see uh. Everything that's going on over there. Um, our concern, we're opposed, and our biggest concern is um, the. The, the traffic, but mainly the parking. Um, I don't know, something changed three or four years ago. We didn't have any problems with the uh, with the apartments at all, and then three or four years ago, all of a sudden, everybody is parking in front of our house. Um, it's been, the access to our property has been blocked several times, we've missed days of mail because people park right next to our mailbox. Um, we're dealing horribly with uh trash issues. Um. People park there for several days, and I think Ryan Henderson, which no relation, but I believe Ryan was mentioning how. You know, it, you know, that we, yeah, we can call the police after a couple of days and then wait a couple of days and wait a couple of days for a tow truck, usually by then they move, but. We've had, we've lost access to our property for over a week because people will just park in front of it and not move. And we don't know where they're at, we can't get ahold of them or anything like that, so that's, that's our main concern. Um.
I kept calling the police a few times.
Yeah, we have had to call the police a couple of times to try to get a tow truck. Um, like, and that takes forever, so. We've had garbage, we've had garbage bags with uh needles that my mom runs a business, a daycare business out of the house. And we've had drug paraphernalia in garbage bags right outside our front door where these kids are going in and out every day. So, yeah, grass is ruined from oil, uh, people have done maintenance on their car and just left the trash in our yard. Some people have thrown their trash over our fence into our backyard. So, again, parking, parking is the main concern, if we can get the cars off of the street. I don't have any problem with this, but we need, we need to stop the cars from parking in front of all along Sagert. We have guests, we can, they can't even park because we, there's no place to park, they have parked freaking half mile of the street. Just when we have guests, our family come over and visit and stuff, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, okay, then we have online mayor, we have uh Jim Kyle first.
Alright. Watch, my screen is shifting around right now. Where'd he go?
I'm right here.
There you are. You moved like, you moved three spots over to the left.
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a pleasure to meet, meet you again, mayor and uh the city council. Um, you know, I, I spoke at length and I, I'm really gratified to see a lot of the residents are, are part of this. Uh, you may have noticed a vastly increased amount of people on this call, and that's because. Uh, we, this really matters, and there's a lot of affected residents here. And uh, we all would like this to be addressed, uh, just to reemphasize some of the things that. Have already been mentioned by several of the neighbors, um, but the garbage. Is a problem, we can't have our garbage cans, the only way we can get our garbage picked up is we have to keep them out there. And the wonderful thing is, then people start using them, so just the other day I noticed in my um, one of my cans, I had beer, beer. Cans in there, so that's, that's nice. Um, but that's, that's an issue, then we have. A problem with our mail on occasions where those will get blocked, our neighbors will have their uh mailboxes blocked. Um, and then in addition to that, it, it really is, and this is. Just like, I think the nature of what's going on with the amount of residents are being added over time, we, we already have. I, I'm sure you're aware of this, a new neighborhood being added in, a new, I don't know how many houses is going to be added in there, but we already have. Additional homes that are going to be put into this neighborhood, and um, that's already causing residents to leave. And so I'm not sure people want that, but that's what's happening, is that we're actually. I don't, I don't think it's really a great thing if we're causing so much traffic congestion and concerns and stress. That we're forcing residents to leave, and we've, I know for a fact, I know of two residents that have left. And I've been in Twelton nine years, I, eleven years total, nine years in this, this residence, and I, I consider this our home, I consider. Uh, I wanna stay here, but I, I, there's a limit, there's a, there's a quality of life limit. And it, at some point, you've reached that capacity where I have to abandon, I guess, the, the home that I, I put so much effort into and made it our home, our neighborhood. Um, during the pandemic, I had my, a playhouse put in my backyard. I would love to be able to have my son continue to use that over the years, and, and now it's in jeopardy. And I just wanna make sure that it's, it's clear that this decision has an impact long term, and it, it's, it's untenable now. Now you're adding more of all of this, that's gonna make it really challenging for all of us. And at the end of the day, I just wanna make sure that there's a better solution, because this one is not it. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of the, the opportunity again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next up is uh Lisa Wilson Coleman.
Thank you, mayor, council. And thank you for those who spoke before. Um, I was at the last attending meeting. Um, my concerns are still the same, uh, parking, yes, is a big issue. But my, being in the mental health field. Um, and working with people uh that are now having delays in getting treatment and. Therapy and med management because of COVID. And all of the interpersonal stress that is going on is really confusing to. Add on top of our already stressful situation in our living community. Another hundred and thirty-two units. Um, yeah, that would be great for studios and one bedrooms. Um, but even as I was walking today and, and looking at the three-story building that will be at our entrance. Uh, that will be taking over our um, child play area, our car wash station. And our hot tub. Um, I noticed there's not gonna be a lot of drivable space. Uh, we already have a problem with in and out driving in our driveways because they're so narrow. And now we're gonna have buildings. Um, that's also gonna affect some of those single uh. Story um residents as you come in that line um, the roadway. Um, they're not even gonna have a view, they're gonna look out to a three-story building. Um, and what's that, you know, that um. Cost going to be, you know, it is like um. Living downtown Portland, which that's not why we're living in Twelton. Um, we want to have access, we want to have our kids to have a green space. This new plan, that's gonna take their green space, and it's going to be a barbecue pit. And where are they going to play? Um, it is necessary, we live right by the elementary school, and we have a lot of kids in the area. So the, the traffic and the parking is a concern. Um, I understand that. Looking at this and all of these requirements have been met. Unfortunately, we've got a housing crisis that also includes affordable housing. And to get into this apartment, I had to make forty-five hundred dollars a month. To pay my rent of eighteen hundred dollars a month. I'm a single mom, got my bachelor's, got my real grown-up job.
Yeah, but about ten more seconds, ma'am.
And it's costing me sixty percent of my income. So I don't get the luxury of having a small complex. I get to add another six hundred people into my neighborhood.
Thank you for attending tonight, alright.
Uh, next up, we have two folks who raised their hand, looks like Scott Bauer is first.
Yeah, hi guys, I appreciate your time. Um, I'm sorry, uh, listen, didn't have more time, but um. Couple of questions, uh, you know, a lot of this has been driven by moving from. Low to medium to like high residential. Um, and it looked like there was a gap of like a hundred and nine units for our city. And Frank, please uh. Correct me if I'm wrong with that, um. Or maybe Steve, you know. Uh, so there's a facility that's being built, like, I guess it's east of, of the Nyberg Mall. Um, and again, I'm looking for any feedback here. How much of that uh new facility or establishment of apartments is closing the gap on those hundred and seven or hundred and nine? Uh. Unit deficits would be the first question that I have. Um, and I, I don't know, can we do a, can we do a question answer, or do I just need to?
You can pose a question, staff can answer when it's their turn again, but you've gotta wrap it up in about a minute and a half.
Okay, so yeah, I guess, you know, um. Based off of the folks that have been already speaking and the testimony that, you know, was put forward last week. Uh, why here? I guess, if our goal is. You know, a hundred and nine apartments, and we have a new complex going up directly north of us, it'll probably cover that gap in that. Specific category, based off of all of the concerns, complaints with traffic, parking, um. You know. I don't know, I, I mean, it does fit, but if you can fit that other piece of the puzzle in another way. Then is this overkill? I guess is my, my question. Um, you know, if we can solve the problem in an easier fashion that, in a place that isn't already overcrowded, why not do that? Uh, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor, next up is Kimber, is all I have.
Hi, sorry about that. Um, I just wanna say, I live across the street from Pat. I've lived here for twenty-five years, I moved my children up here when they were young. Um, we loved Twelton. And um, at, as many of the issues that have already been discussed tonight, um, as part of the larger picture for Twelton concerning. Um, you know, na- negative impact or, you know. Quality of life, those kinds of issues. Um, I've seen. This neighborhood change, uh, we've gotten quite a few areas where there were like single homes that have been added, multiple homes, and um. Um, and I just wanted to say that um. As a part of the quality of life, I see every day when I drive out, uh, it's hard to get out off of uh. Ninety-third onto Sagert anymore because of all the parked cars parked there. And um, then going down, there are not sidewalks on both sides of the street down Sagert, and there are not on ninety-third either. So there are children walking on the sides of the road. Um, even with the new crosswalk that has been put in for safety issues, there are children in the bike lane walking towards traffic when I go to school. Uh, or when I go to work, because they're on their way to school, and um. Yeah, I just worry about children's safety, I did daycare for a number of years, I love kids, and I. You know, every day I worry that if they add more apartments there, not only is the parking going to get worse, but the number of people coming in and out. And the safety of the kids that are here that don't even have sidewalks and can't even ride their bikes in the street. Um, is really concerning to me, and like when people park in front of my mailbox. Like everybody else, I don't call a tow truck partly because I feel like it's not their fault, they have nowhere else to park. I mean, I've had to go out at midnight before and go over and ask the gentleman who. His music was so loud in my bedroom, because he was parked outside of Pat's house, booming out his music, and I had to go at midnight and. Get dressed and go outside and ask him to please turn his music down, and he said, oh, sorry, there was no parking in my apartments, and I just wanted to listen to. Some music in my car. I mean, yeah, you can turn it down and not, and that's really inconsiderate, but at the same time, I'm not gonna call the police on you. Because you live there too, so you do have some rights in the neighborhood, and um. You know, I, I don't blame the tenants for where, what's going on with the apartments, I mean. Uh, you try to call the apartments to discuss anything with them, and it, it's a recording, you never get a person. You um, you try, they tell you to send an email, so you send the email and it comes back, either go to their portal and pay your rent. Or make a complaint to their portal as a tenant, but there aren't any options for them, they don't even interact with the community. At all, the, the neighborhood, I should say, and so, you know, they aren't concerned about. Our, our children's safety and, and our neighborhood, they are more concerned on their end, it feels like it's more about. The almighty dollar than the um, the neighborhood or giving people homes, uh, unfortunately. And um, you know, I just, I love Twelton, I moved up here from Salem, like I said, twenty-five years ago, and I. I really wanna stay in Twelton, but at the same time, I've had neighbors move also that. They've moved simply because of the congestion and that they felt their children weren't safe. Um, in this neighborhood anymore with all the cars and the way that they drive. And um, that's pretty much what I had to, wanted to say, just quality of life. Has really been affected, and I just can't imagine, I wa- I won't be able to stay here at all. If um, if this plan does go through, and I know other neighbors that feel the same way, unfortunately. And um, thank you for your time.
Next up is Talia Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Talia Rivera. I am a tenant in the apartment complex. I want to say firstly to all of our neighbors, I'm greatly sorry for all of the trouble and hardship that you are going through. As a tenant, parking is one of the main issues that we have here. I live in one of the few residents that have a stairs that go down to the complex to. My actual apartment and there is a parking space in front of the stairs. I have to walk around a car, sometimes hitting a car. Or walking on a side of the hill to get around a car just to get out of my apartment complex. That being said, that has definitely spilled over into the neighboring lands, which is actually really hard to do as I was coming home tonight at around seven P M. There were a couple of cars that just had hazard lights on because they could not find parking anywhere. And the hazard lights were in the actual street where you're supposed to drive. I saw people going around said cars and I've seen this a few times where either delivery trucks or. Various other cars are just putting hazard lights on and just stopping in the middle of the street because there's no place for them to go to. And I believe if this were to continue with a parking problem, this would just cut either cause accidents. Pedestrians could be walking around these cars and you would never see them. They're possibly hit. So. Although I do like some of the measures with the additional pedestrian walkway. I like to walk around the neighborhood that I live in quite often. But I only do so late at night because I don't trust being able to walk either during the day or with traffic is actually pretty. Pretty heavy, so um, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tori Nelson.
Hi, uh, I'm a longtime resident here, uh, live on Ninety-third Avenue. And uh, you know, as basically as all of my neighbors have said, nobody who lives here wants this. The only people that want this don't live here. Um, I, uh, my previous job, I was the building service director and uh, maintenance manager. Of an apartment community. And uh, a lot of what I have seen from Twalton Heights. Is just poor service for their own residents and a lack of care for the greater community surrounding it. Um, it's created congestion. It's created, you know, garbage issues, people not being able to get their mail or their medications through the mail. Um, degradation, mental health, um, overall frustration. Um, and uh, yeah, I mean. Everyone that I've spoken to feels very strongly that this is a terrible idea. The situation as it stands is bad and this will only make it worse. And will have an additional side effect, as was uh, previously mentioned. Of endangering children. So uh, I think we can all agree that that's bad. We live, you know, a block and a half away from an elementary school. Um, yeah, I grew up in this neighborhood. I went to the old Twalton Elementary School. That's now um, an old folks community. Um. You know, I, I, you know, would like to, you know, have. My neighbors feel comfortable and safe in their own neighborhood and have their children feel safe. And I don't believe that um, letting them pack more houses and more people. Into an area that's already having major issues. Um. That's just going to create more problems. Thank you.
Do.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. That's it for everyone uh, on Zoom and at the Pulse Center.
All right. Uh, so with that, I'll move on to other interested persons who wish to uh, be heard tonight. Uh, okay, hearing none, uh, oh. Uh, turn it back over to the applicant for rebuttal of uh, some of the public comments if they wish.
Sure, thank you very much. I guess uh, all I would say. Or all that we really have to say relative to this is I, I. Clearly there are issues and problems and we're not arguing that those are present or exist. I think the argument we might make is that this is a plan map amendment dealing with zoning. And uh, I think even Jim Keel mentioned that, you know, there needs to be a better solution and I'm not sure. That um. This, this changing the zoning of this fixes any of those problems. Uh, we've, there's been others discussed. Uh, you know, including a, a, a plan, a, a parking, uh. Excuse me, I'm sorry, a permitted parking solution. Uh, that might help the neighborhood deal with some of the things that they're talking about. The reality is. Uh, as far as I can tell. Even if the owner decided to eliminate all um. Fees, there's no guarantee. It's a public street. Anybody can park there and do all of those things you're talking about. If you want to. Make that something that's going on, that can't be solely the responsibility of this development. Even if you've changed these other pieces, you need to have similar kind of whether it's municipal or something else. To address that concern. Last thing I would say is in terms of parking, we've demonstrated and Steve talked about it a little bit. We, we've exceeded the code requirements, the law by a significant amount. Um, and I don't, again, with that, without rewriting your zoning or your requirements, I'm not sure what else we can do there. So. That's, oh, and the last, the last point that I would make and Steve can probably get back to this too. Is somebody asked why? I think um, the reason why this is a, an owner who's owned this property for twenty-plus years, they're a part of the community as well. Uh, they intend to stay there. And part of what they're trying to do is make from their end, which I think Steve also mentioned, this is actually a business. Trying to make this a viable business for them to be there and maintain it and make it a nice place. And I think when you look at the housing needs analysis that was published by the City of Twalatin. Uh, when, when they came up with this, when this analysis came up, it looked like. This answered a goal that had been established by the City of Twalatin. For medium-high level density housing. I'm sorry, for medium, medium density housing. Um, in a place where, as I understand it, there's no other land available even to designate that zoning. So. It seemed like a fit. I think that's probably all we have to say.
Uh, any um, Steve, you have anything? You want to add?
Just to clarify, um, I think it was Mr. Bowers question, the um. Twalton Commons Apartment Complex um, uh, on Nyberg Lane that. Uh, those units or that land capacity was factored into the housing needs analysis since the deficit is above and beyond. The housing that we've provided as part of that development. Um, just want to touch on that one because that specifically relates to some of the approval criteria. Um, but as far as the other factors, I mean, I think that. Um. I mean, I, I think that there are certainly a lot of issues that have been identified by the public and I. Certainly by no means want to undermine any of them. I think that a lot of them are not zoning issues. Um, and will potentially continue, you know, with or without the proposed change. And so I think that it's certainly. Um. You know, incumbent on the city to, to look at, you know, what are those issues we can control? Also say in, you know. Having dealt with some of these issues previously, some of them are not within the city's control and some of them are. Private citizen-to-citizen interactions that cities will, I mean, I think if some people point out, will struggle to. Um, intervene in the middle of, and that's, uh, that's just a long-term, I think. Um. Condition that we've seen everywhere and I don't, I don't profess to have any solutions to that.
Okay, thanks, Steve. All right, with that, I'll now uh, open the floor to questions for, from councilors. For either the city staff or the applicant. Council Pratt.
Um, my question's to the applicant. Um, I understand what you're saying that. You're exceeding the parking requirements that was forced on us by H P two thousand and one. However, it's quite obvious that there's a parking problem now, which is quite. It sounds to me like it's affecting the safety of the public. And um, and when I looked at it, you have nine parking spots for visitors. So that's one parking spot for visitors for every thirty-seven units. Um, the way I'm looking at this, there's, there's a, a way to help. Um, come to a resolution here by just um. Either having less paid spots, more um, spots for visitors to. Help def- defray some of this parking on the street. And I would think an owner that's lived in this or. Had property in the city this long would want to act in good faith and um, make some concessions so we can make this work for everybody.
Well, I'm not the owner and I can't make the concessions. Um, not, not to say they wouldn't. But I think the position would be i- is that we've, we could do some of those things, may do some of those things. Don't know that that solves any of the issues that you're talking about. And so, the, to, to. Even to make that commitment, just raise something, we're already exceeding. A requirement by a significant amount. We could add the amount that you wanted us to exceed that requirement. And then what happens when people still park in front of those, the other space? And that's where, that's where I'm saying, I feel like I'm not dismissing it. Clearly it's a problem. We've heard it. From the initial hearing we had and, and um, and we've heard it in two of these. Uh, council meetings now, but it seems to me that. A more appropriate solution is if it was permitted parking, you can't park there without a permit and that would also control. When you park, who's in front of what parking spaces, you lose your permit. It's a lot clearer than trying to chase down who happened to leave their car on the street. Uh, in your space, but. Us adding, th- th- this owner adding even more visitor parking spaces doesn't eliminate the possibility of the occurrence. And the problem that you're describing or that's been described.
Okay, I just have one uh, kind of follow-up on what you're saying about the permit parking. We heard several residents saying. Um, when someone's illegally or parked there now, that it takes several days to get it towed. So that's not going to solve the problem either. I don't see how that would. Be any different.
And I'm not arguing that for them either, but I don't see how that's the owner of this property's problem that municipal rules are not being enforced.
Okay. Other questions for either. Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question is for the applicant and I guess I'm curious and we've heard several times our community members, our neighbors. Say that um, there is not an easy process to get a hold of the owner to express concerns and a lack of their. Return response, even if, if they can leave a response. And so, you know, clearly there are landlord-tenant laws that, that um. You clearly are aware of. So I guess I'm kind of curious why in the world, um, a- and again, like uh, Council Pratt stated, if. If our neighbors can't get a hold of, of, of their landlord, you know, where, where are you going to make changes in that process? Or are they going to have to go to court or something? I'm not suggesting that they are because this isn't my. You know, I, I'm not living there, but I, I am kind of concerned that there doesn't seem to be an open door policy.
To be honest, I can't speak to that. I'm the architect. I don't have anything to do with their uh, leasing uh, arrangements or, or how they run that. Um, and, and I agree with you that I think if there are issues, there's other means of addressing that. That aren't part of the zoning policy. So I, I don't, I only know that part.
So why are they not here tonight then, I wonder?
Well, there's some representatives here. I don't know if any of them want to speak up. Or there were, I don't know.
And I have a, a, another question, Mayor.
Well, and actually, can I say one other thing too? I mean. The, the other thing I'd say is even tonight, we've heard from I don't know how many tenants, four or five out of. Hundreds that live in that complex. And we've heard from four or five out of, I imagine, hundreds who live to the south. We did studies. That I know people don't trust them, but from our point of view, we're just consultants. We don't care. And we had studies where people went out and did that information and showed. That yes, there's a parking issue that everybody's describing. Nobody's arguing that. There's also an issue that there's a lot of parking that's available. And the, I, I, I don't know, you know, so it's very passionate and I understand that and it, it affects them, but I don't know that we have any. Data beyond feelings. That are, that are making these judgments and to think about changing a zoning requirement. Again, if you go back to Steve's. This is the first step. This is just zoning. This doesn't do anything other than say that. Somebody has the opportunity to continue through the same kind of a process. Be in front of folks again and, and determine whether they meet the requirements or not. So.
Other questions for the applicant or?
Hey, John, uh, this is Andrew LeBeau. Um, I'm actually on the call. If I can answer any questions, I, I work for U D R.
Welcome.
Good to be here. Thanks for having us.
So, other questions for staff or? Yeah.
I, I do want to respond to the last comment that was made, um, that, that we're not being. Open and open door policy. And I just, I do want to say that, you know, we've conducted ourselves above reproach. We've been open, we've posted all the notices in compliance with what's required. We've hired. A local planning organization who's well-versed in how to handle the public forum. We've hired our local architect who also is, is well-versed in, in the area. And so we've done everything we can to try to make sure that we're embracing the community. As John alluded to, we've been a part of this community for more than twenty years. We intend to take this, this, this property and greatly enhance it. It's, you know, a lot of the, the discussion tonight has been surrounding. Us adding units, um, creating parking disasters, but. I think one thing that's being lost is that we're committed to investing into this community. Millions and millions of dollars to the residents, to the experience of the residents, to. Uplifting, you know, the, the, the local community and the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think everything that we're doing is, is in the best interest of everyone. And I just, I think the picture should be painted that. You know, we're doing everything we can. We're trying to listen. We're participating in these meetings to find out what we can do. In addition to exceeding the parking requirements, in addition to exceeding development and planning requirements. So we want to make sure that we're good neighbors.
Council Pratt.
My questions to Steve and it's um. We do have limited land and um, so. What other, I mean, how many other acres or pieces of property do we have to develop this much? These hundred and nine units we need?
I don't know the answer to that for sure. I think that. A couple of thoughts, one of which is that this is a quasi judicial hearing and so. We're considering the facts specific to this. Um, proposal. And so that's something I think to, to bear in mind. Uh, my. My general sense is that there are not a lot of other. R M L, because you have, would have to have a lower zoning or R L uh, zoned parcels that have. Excess like raw acreage, like land that could be repurposed into something else. And so I don't, we didn't. We'd hope to get a grant to do some of that study, but we did not get it from the state. And so we might have had a better answer. My sense is that particular for this type of zoning, there's not a lot of other. Land that has a similar opportunities to if. I mean, again, that's.
Fine, fine. That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, very, can't be more specific.
So other questions for staff or the applicant? I see hands up, um, but uh, the public comment period's over and it's only Q and A for um. City Council with the applicant and staff at this point. To any other questions for staff? Or applicant? So with that, it seems like, uh, are we ready to deliberate? All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. And we'll move on to council deliberations of the ordinance. Council Sacco. And then Council President Grimes.
Thank you, everyone who has taken the time to be here tonight. Um, especially thank you to the residents of Twalatin that have come out and spoken tonight. Um, and taken your Valentine's Day evening. Um, I've lived in apartments in Twalatin and I can definitely understand issues with parking and safety. My son was raised in, in apartments in Twalatin from the age of about four to middle school. So I absolutely hear you with the bicycle riding and um, lots of traffic last um. Last time we talked about trash concerns and I've been there and understand them. Um. So I understand, not only do I understand that your concerns are valid, I have empathy because I have lived that. Um. So I absolutely understand where these concerns are coming from. Um. A lot of these issues that I'm hearing tonight and um, just overall. Don't, you know, they, they exist today and I don't think that. Don't, you know, they, they exist today and I don't think that. What's on the table tonight is the issue of parking or, um. Trash along the road. Um, the issue tonight is. This zoning issue and our role tonight is to decide whether the proposed change. Is consistent with a comprehensive plan. And someone said tonight, you know, nobody wants this. Um, and it's not about what we want per se. We're here to decide whether this change. Is consistent with the plan, um, and if it meets the greater good of our community. And when I think about that. I think about, um, housing prices. Um, and one of the only ways to fix housing prices is inventory. And this solves that need of inventory. You know, whether, whether we like it or not, that's, that's, that's how we solve this, this problem. Um, I was talking to somebody earlier today, there's a house up for sale across the street from me that is. Over double what I paid for my house about five or six years ago. The housing prices are going crazy. And again, inventory. That's the way to fix that. Um, and it's going to take more than just the changes that would be made with this, with this zone amendment. I, um. I also think it's about, you know, we talk about kids and safety of our kids. I think about. My, my kid who is an adult now and having to find affordable housing, um, in the near future when he graduates college. And, you know, these, these changes that, that are being made with housing inventory. Effect our kids in the next generation, not just as little children today. So I think about that as well and that weighs on me. Um, and I'm very moved by the amount of people that came out tonight and. Um, spoke and I just hope that everybody stays engaged, um, because I think that. If this does pass, this zone amendment passes, I think where the real work's going to, um, take place is in that architectural review. And, um, you know, that, that's where we're going to see exactly what the details that we're talking about tonight. Um, and lastly, I just want to say that obviously there's issues that need to be taken care of in this, in, in this neighborhood. That need to be addressed by, um, by the city with parking. Um, the trash that was talked about, those are the real issues that I think that we need to keep on the table and fix. Uh, outside of this conversation, um, because clearly there's concerns and. Um, that, that we need to take care of regardless of, of what's going on, um, with this, uh, zone amendment. Thank you.
Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you, Counsel Sacco. I appreciate, um. Your deliberation. I appreciate your comments and, but. The personal history that you bring to it, I appreciate that very much. Um, I also want to thank everyone who. Made the effort to be here to testify all the letters that we've received. Um, the applicant made a note of only four or six people. Per, uh, housing development being available to give testimony, but. I think all of us who've been involved, um, and volunteered in the public sphere, understand that. Um, it's very, very difficult for people to have access, make themselves available and actually put themselves out there. In such a public way of public speaking to come to meetings and, and to give their testimony and. I'm very moved by the amount of, um, input that we've received and I can understand a lot of the frustrations that people feel. Um, with issues of density and growth in our community. I very much respect what Counselor Sacco had to say tonight because I think in some of the most. Broad terms, that's exactly what we're talking about. It's just a zoning issue. Um, do we take an apartment complex that's. Certain density, do we double the density? And given the fact that on paper, we seem to have a deficit of certain types of housing. It seems like, you know, there's a certain logic of going down that direction. But I think in a broader sphere, I think a lot of what we are responsible for as counselors is we're kind of the caretakers of the community. And sometimes I think it's the hardest part of what we do is trying to do the balance of. What really is in the best interest of the community. And I just feel like at this point. We already have. An apartment complex. We're already, you know, offering a. Different ways to be members of the community at different price points. And I'm just feeling that. Doubling the density at that particular place is just going to impact negatively the quality of life. Not only. The, the safety, but the quality of life in the neighborhoods. And I don't feel that it is the burden that the neighborhoods. Have to bear to meet our housing density requirements. You know, I feel like we've got a school right there. I, I feel like increasing traffic is just a dangerous situation. I'm not comfortable at all with that. Um, I don't like the idea of, of. Changing the zoning and doubling the density without really seeing. A firm plan of what the development would look like. I have no sense if we are increasing. Um, apartments that make sense for families or if we are increasing. A single bedroom or I have no idea the price points if any. I don't believe that any of this is going to be, you know, what we would consider affordable housing. So I'm not, you know, I don't feel like we're making a giant concession to help meet some goals. Um, like I said, it's already an apartment complex. It already offers different ways to be involved in the community. And I'm not sure that just. You know, sort of giving a blank check to increase the density by 50% is going to really, you know. Make enough of a difference that it's going to make all of these other. Um, issues that have been brought forth is going to make that any better. Um. I just. I, I just feel like it's, it's, it's a difficult situation. We want affordable housing. We want more housing options. But I don't think that this is the exact place to make that happen. And I don't think that it should happen on the backs. Of the neighborhood, um, and the people that attend the school. I don't, I don't think it's their burden to bear. Um, thank you for listening. I apologize. I hope I don't sound too on my soapbox, but. I've given this a lot of thought and I just. It just does not sit right with me to take a situation that's already contentious and increase the problem by 50%. Um, and I realized that the idea of permit parking, um, on the surface is a very, um, easy. Seemingly antiseptic way to fix the problem, but I, you know, I live near a school that has a lot of sporting events. And when you get a lot of congestion, crazy things happen. Fire lanes get parked in, crosswalks get parked in. Um, handicap parking spaces are taken by people that don't have the right kind of sticker. It's just. It's the natural outcome of too much density in an area that's really not designed for that much density. And it stresses every system. And everything that the homeowners have said, I can completely understand. I've seen it just in our personal situation with the neighborhood that I live in and how my neighbors are at the breaking point on certain days with. School traffic and sports field traffic and garbage and car alarms. I mean, I, I can completely understand what they're saying. So. Um, anyway, I appreciate the other counselors. Thank you for listening and I appreciate the consideration.
Other comments? Uh, Counsel Pratt and Counsel Brooks.
Counsel Brooks, go first, please.
I want to thank everybody that came and testified today too. I think it's really difficult and it's a lot of complex things. And I've been listening. I think that we have real issues here with parking, with garbage. Within the complex and outside the complex with safety. Um, and those issues. I think we need to really consider as what our part of, we can do as a city to help with that and. Um. In what part, um, permitting, parking and, and these kinds of things can help with. Um. And I think that there's a lot of pieces to this. Um. And I also agree that it's a tough, um. Well, there's a lot of tough stuff with growth, which we've talked, I, I mean, this has been something that's been hard for all of us with. Whether it's traffic, whether it's the urban growth boundary area, um, you know, if we don't do this and then there's. Um, uh, building out inside neighborhoods, then there's going to be people that are going to be talking about. They're not going to want those kinds of density issues. So. And, and then if we make a decision later after some of these parking requirements change. We could also be in much worse shape if we kick it down the, the road. My concern as a decision maker here tonight with, um, what's in front of me is, I don't. Think, I think that for the plan and for what the. What's being asked of me tonight for density and how I'm supposed to be looking at this and following the law. That there's nothing in here, and I think it's really important to understand what council does. We don't. Um. Get to make, uh, the rules. It, I mean, we can make, we make some policies, but the policies that are in front of us are already set. So in my mind. What I'm supposed to be doing is making sure that things are done properly. Um, and it doesn't mean that it, it's perfect at all. It just, but I don't, I know that there's cases in real estate where there's overreach by governments. And then you get sued. Um, and so I think it's really important to understand what's in, in front of me. And what responsibility I have towards the city. I also want to say as far as some of the density issues that we're talking about, these are decisions that we follow that are. Um, given to us by the metro. By community involvement in the housing plan where people were involved in the 2040. Housing plan and that tho- those are places with community engagement that we're listening to by following this plan as well. And, um, through metro. So those are, I think I said, the state metro. And we also have conditions based, put on us from the county. So we're not the. Um, I think it's confusing because I think when you look at city council from the outside, it's like, we're just making all these decisions and. We get to make whatever decisions we want and we've heard that there are some problems and why would we make these decisions? And there's some really grounded, um, legal reasons that we have to make decisions and there's famous. Uh, Tigerd problems where there was overreach that went to Luba that are, that went to the Supreme Court. So, and that costs a lot of money, um, for the cities. So this particular set of qualifications that I see. As far as checkmarks, that the petitioner has done those things that. They're asked to do at this point in the process, in my mind. And that's, um. What my job is here tonight. And it's not to say that those other issues are not valid. They're very valid. And, um, and I want to talk further about those solutions and I think that our. City manager is going to want to talk about those things and then our mayor is going to want to talk about those things. And that Steve's going to want to talk about those things as well because this is my neighborhood and I'm right around the corner. And, um, and, you know, I, um. I want to do my best that I can do in the places that it makes sense to make it livable and healthy. And safe in our community. And the same thing is, um, we're also a place where. We have limited land. We have some things that we're supposed to be doing. Um, I agree with Counselor Sacco. There's a certain thing about inventory. I don't think that's all of the fix. Um, however, there's other reasons as well, and that's why. There's three bigger governing entities that are telling us this is the kind of changes that we have to make to. Absorb population growth in our area so that we don't have more and more homeless people in our region. And that's. A real concern for me. So that's kind of where I am. Um. And I appreciate the time to deliberate and I'm looking forward to what Counselor Pratt has to say.
Wow, this is tough. Some days it's hard to be a counselor. Um, I really appreciate the people that came out and spoke today and. Um, I think your concerns are so valid and. Um, you know, you're, you're going to have green space taken away. I don't think your parking issues are going to get better. Um, I'm concerned what is, you know, how much more our, um, police force is going to have to be out there and the cost to the city. But those, those aren't what we're talking, we can only look at what's in the public interest. And as I listen to everything. The only two things that I heard that I would say are what we should be looking at are the needs for housing. And safety. Those are the two issues that to me fall in public interest. Um. Um, and I didn't mean to call you on the carpet, Steve, but I, I just wanted to point out, we, we, we have a really limited space for housing and. I, I don't think this is an ideal place to have more housing. It's not near a park. Um. You know, there's a parking issue apparently and, um, but. Oh gosh, this, this is really tough. I did want to point out one thing though. Um, we did hear one person, um, let us know what her rent was. I can't imagine, I would not call that affordable. I don't think it falls in the guidelines of affordable and I can't imagine that new construction is going to be more affordable. So. I want to, um, just make that clear that I don't see this as being affordable. However, um, as Counselor Brooks said, um. We've shown we have a middle housing need. We have these overriding governmental entities, the state, metro and the county and. This is the future. This is unfortunately or fortunately, it's the way that we've been told we have to take care of these. Housing needs and the homeless situations. So, um, this is going to be a tough decision, but that's where I'm at.
So Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a, a tough decision and I'm generally, um. On the side of rallying community members to come and speak at council and I know how brave and hard. Uh, that is to get people to, um, really truly rally around a point. And I guess what makes me really sad is that there's been an issue that our neighbors are telling us for four or five years that's been going on with this parking. And this is the first time, well, and I'm new to council, so maybe council has heard this before, but I have to believe that if they've heard it before. And the city's heard it before, that action wouldn't have been taken. And so I feel just really sad that, um, we're just now hearing about it. And I feel very hopeful that we're hearing about it so that the appropriate people can become involved and make decisions. Um, and I, um, I heard what, um, the community has said and what all my counselors, uh, fellow, um, counselors have said. And I guess where I'm coming from is really truly, our position tonight is about the rules and, and the law. And, and how this goes forward. And I do see those as separate issues, um, from the parking and, and that sort of thing. And so that, that is just where my head is right now.
Right. And Counsel Hillier. Uh, I guess I'm, I'll wrap it up here. Um, I also. I, when I, we first moved to Tuwalton, I lived in Tuwalton Heights 20 plus years ago. Uh, we had an apartment that faced the old Tuwalton Elementary School. So we're on that side of Tuwalton Heights. So I actually did live there for a couple of years. Uh, but what the question is tonight is, is this. Uh, consistent with our comprehensive plan. And that's what we have to focus in on tonight. There are three other steps after this that can deal with the garbage. The garbage, recycling, the parking, uh but tonight's question is, is this consistent with our comprehensive plan? And you know, is this within our guidelines in our. Long range planning for housing? And the answer is to me, yes. I mentioned earlier tonight, uh, the city of Hillsborough struggling with. Tradespeople coming in to help build the product, you know, build the pro- the fab and intel, and there not being any apartments to live in. That these folks are coming in from out of state. Hundreds of construction workers have nowhere to live. So we desperately need these housing uh options. Here in the city, because then they could, you know, live here and drive out to Hillsborough and put up that fab and add that intel. Uh, the question is on uh impacts on the homeowners across the street. I know we've had a very successful run at implementing parking permitting. And now all that takes is members of that community to come forward and ask for a residential parking permitting. Uh, area in their zone. And the Chief Steel, the Police Department will work with them and as will staffers. On how to implement that. We've done that around the high school. We've done it around the apartment complex over here off of Hazelbrook Road. It's been been done several times. To lessen the impact of those folks across the street from Twalton Heights. So um. I have full trust in our city staff and the members of our ARB Architectural Review Board. That, you know, vet these kind of questions that are ob- obviously uh concerns to the residents in Twalton Heights. Uh, I remember back when all the nervousness when we approved the Nybrook Rivers. Uh, uh, you know, process of bringing that shopping center in and ARB was uh critical. And making things happen and getting the design right and making sure it met the community needs and it met. Traffic conditions and parking and uh. Traffic cycling. All that stuff was handled at ARB, not at city council. So ARB is going to be the next critical step if the applicant decides. Uh, if this uh zoning is a approved tonight, that's their next challenge that they're going to get past ARB. Building, they're going to comply with building zones. You saw from Steve. Uh, chapter seventy-three, A, B, and C, and D. They're going to have to deal with all these questions will be have to be. Uh, answered before they can develop. Um, so. Again, in short, I I agree with city staff that and the planning commission. That uh this meets the needs of our comprehensive plan and that it should be approved. So with that, do I have any motions? Pretty quiet. So if you're are in favor of this ordinance as a counselor, you would ask for. Motion and vote for uh repertorying by title only.
I don't see the number.
It's a fourteen sixty-four dash twenty-two.
I thought that was a Herman Roat.
No, it's Twalton Heights.
It says that fourteen sixty-five dash twenty-two looks like annexation.
Fourteen sixty-four.
Oh. Um, okay.
Number's not listed on the agenda, and you're looking at the next.
That's why, okay. Um, okay, so I will make a motion. Um, this is a hard motion for me to make, but I'm making it um. To. Read by title only ordinance number fourteen sixty.
Four.
Four dash twenty-two. For the rezoning of the Twalton Heights Apartments.
Set by title only?
By title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second for first reading by title only of ordinance fourteen sixty-four dash twenty-two and discussions on those motions. All right, Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Counselor Hillier.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
And President Grimes.
I am voting I, but just to let everyone know that the reason that I am voting I is it's because it's a first reading by title only. And if I don't vote I, then unfortunately, our legal city legal representative has to read the entire ordinance. Word for word, which is. Onerous. So yes, I will vote I for first reading by title only.
Okay, thank you. And I vote I also. Uh, Sherilyn, you're doing the reading, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ordinance number fourteen sixty-four dash twenty-two and ordinance amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Map ten dash one to apply the medium-high density. Residential zoning district to a parcel located at tax map two S one, two, three, DC. Tax lot six hundred, PMA twenty-one dash zero, 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 one.
So do I have a motion for second reading?
Do we really feel so bad about this that we are are hesitant to make motions to approve this? I know we're all conflicted, but that should really say something. Gosh.
Especially when it's just the reading of the title.
I just feel terrible about this, and I feel like. There's some really conflicted a- opinions as to what's in the best interest of the public tonight.
So I have a motion for second reading by title only.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only of ordinance number. One, four, six, four, dash twenty-two.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and second for second reading of the ordinance by title only and discussions on the motions. Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Counselor Hillier.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
And President Grimes.
Again, I'm voting I, so we don't have to read the entire ordinance. We can just use the title. I.
And I vote I also. Sherilyn.
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-four dash twenty-two and ordinance amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Map ten dash one to apply the medium-high density residential zoning district to a parcel located at tax map two S one, two, three, DC. Tax lot six hundred, PMA twenty-one dash zero, 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 one.
Right. So at this point, this is where we look for a motion to adopt the ord- or ordinance and vote on it. Uh, if it is not unanimous, then it will not be approved tonight, and we'll have to come back for a third reading. Uh, at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth. So do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion and second to adopt ordinance number one, four, six, four, dash twenty-two. Any discussions on the motion? All right, uh, with seeing none, Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Uh, Counselor Hillier.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counsel President Grimes.
No.
Uh, and the chair votes yes, so since it's not unanimous, this will come back for a third reading on February twenty-eighth. All right, thank you all for attending this uh hearing. We have another one right after this. All right, so next up is another quasi judicial public hearing ordinance number one, four, six, five. Dash twenty-two annexing ten point six acres into the city. I have to read my script here for this one, because this is not a continuance. So annexation to the city of Twalton, City Council, the state legislature requires the following information to be read. For ORS one nine seven dash seven, six, three, sub five and six. And ORS one ninety-seven dot seven, nine, six, three, B. Number one, criteria for approval to propose annexation are in TDC thirty-three dot zero, one, zero. The territory to be annexed is within the metro urban growth boundary. The owners of the territory to be annexed have petitioned to be annexed. The application is consistent with applicable provisions of ORS chapter two, two, two. The property is contiguous to the city or separated from it only by a public runaway or stream. Ors two, 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 two. Whether the annexation is consistent with directly applicable criteria for boundary changes in the Metro Code. An urban service provider agreement or annexation plan adopted under ORS one nine five dot zero, six, five. Urban planning or other agreement other than those under ORS one nine five dot zero, six, five. Between the affected entity and a necessary party. Comprehensive plan and public facility plans. Regional framework plan or functional plan. Whether the proposed change will promote or not interfere with the timely, orderly, and economic provisions of public facilities and services. And consistency with other applicable criteria for the boundary change in a question under state and local law. Item number two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria of those criteria in the Development Code, which you believe apply apply to this decision. I have number three. If additional comments or evidence is provided in support of the application, any party shall be entitled to a continuance of the hearing. Item number four, unless there is a continuance before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may request before the hearing is closed. That the record remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. Item number five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford to counsel. And the parties who have an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval. With sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond in the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Item number six, the hearing will begin with city staff report followed by testimony in favor of the applicant application. Followed by opposition to the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted. Then the hearing will be closed and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Finally, item number seven, any council members who wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, they should do so now. Do we have any? All right, seeing none, I will now hand it over to staff for the presentation on the annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, let me get the presentation going. Okay, I'm assuming you can see that presentation.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Mayor and councilors. Uh, my name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner with the city of Twalton. Tonight I am presenting ANN twenty-one dash zero, 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 two, it's an annexation of property located at eleven, three, forty-five Southwest Turman Road. And also ordinance fourteen sixty-five dash twenty-two for your consideration. So the property is about ten point six acres. As I had previously noted, it's located at eleven, three, forty-five Southwest Turman Road. The property owners are Gary and Wiki Ricky Walgrave, and they are being pre- represented by AAI Engineering. The property is designated general manufacturing. Uh, that's in in the uh, uh, ma- ten point one. Or ten dash one. And any future development, I'd like to point this out, uh, would require a separately separately approved architectural review. So here's the property. It's outlined in black. Um, the property is generally located uh north southwest Mize Lani Street and southwest one hundred and twelfth Avenue. Uh, at that intersection. The property to the north is uh will remain an unincorporated uh Washington County, and then the property to the south that directly abuts Mize Lani Street is actually uh within the city. So here's the zoning. Uh, it's pretty clear. Uh, the whole surrounding area uh all carries that designation of MG. Our general manufacturing. Um, upon annexation, the land will be zoned, uh, general manufacturing as designated in that. Platinum comprehensive plan map ten dash one. Um, and as can be seen, and I had previously noted, it it is a kind of smack dab in the industrial area of Twalton. So um, before granting the proposed annexation, the city council must find that the annexation conforms to the applicable criteria listed on this slide. Staff has included an analysis and findings as exhibit three and has found that the annexation meets all applicable criteria. So the first uh uh criteria that we look at is within the Twalton Development Code. Uh, it is in fact within the urban growth boundary. And the owner, uh, uh, the Walgraves have uh petitioned the city to annex into the city. And then for the Metro Code, it is adjacent to urban services or services could be extended to the property. And then the Oregon revised statutes. It is adjacent to the city to which the property is being annexed and not within another city. So um. Uh, in conclusion. Staff finds that the annexation meets the applicable criteria and recommends adoption of ordinance number fourteen sixty-five dash twenty-two. Uh, if this, uh, if the annexation is approved, the uh property will be annexed into the city of Twalton and uh would. Uh, then have the designation of general manner manufacturing zoning, and that does conclude my presentation.
All right, thanks, Keith. Uh, applicant. Is your.
Good evening. Yeah, sorry. Uh, my name is Brian Kendo. I'm with Falen Development, representing the developer of the project. Uh, we've done several projects in the recent past with city of Twalton. Uh, of the same nature, kind of in the same same air- general area there. Uh, we are proposing three uh. Large tilt-up buildings for manufacturing distribution. Uh, hoping to help the economic growth of the area, not affecting parking or uh any adjacent neighbors. And uh, yeah, we're we're hoping to continue our growth in the limited area that we have and and. Bringing more jobs and uh helping out the community.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, are there anybody, is there anyone in this meeting who would like to testify in favor of this application? Assuming there's no one at the poll center or base where it told us for that. Uh, are those who are opposing this application, here's your opportunity to uh testify in opposition.
I have not been contacted by anyone, Mayor, but uh there are still folks on here from the public.
All right, seeing none there. Uh, other interested parties who would like to uh comment on this application? All right, seeing none. Uh, looks like there's nothing for the applicant to rebut on. So questions uh for staff or for the applicant from council? Okay, pretty quiet there, so I see no questions. So uh if there are no.
Counselor Hillier has your hand up.
Counselor Hillier, sorry, didn't see you.
That's all right. That's all right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question is for the applicant. Do you know what sort of businesses will go into? Your tilt-up buildings?
Uh, so far our target customers are are e-commerce distributors. Um, we we see the market. Uh, there's a viable market. We currently uh right across the street from that have uh. Built two large buildings. Uh, we're getting a company called Victolix, which um. Does manufacturing, distribution of uh. Uh, pipe products. Um, we have a company called Corfini uh gourmet, uh, which is doing meat district. Meat distribution throughout the area. Uh, we've recently done a project up the street that brought FedEx into one of our buildings. Uh, Lamb Research was another uh occupant or another tenant. Um, we had another uh distribution and um. Oh, that's the right word for him. Uh, Iron Man, the they do four by four products. Um, so we're we're open to. To an array of uh of of customers.
Thank you. Will you clarify pipe products, please?
Like your fire sprinkler systems. Uh, in all the buildings, they they create the fittings and the and the piping.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Counselor Pratt.
This is kind of a silly question, probably for Steve, but how do you sit correctly pronounce the street spelled M Y? This is kind of a silly question, probably for Steve, but how do you sit correctly pronounce the street spelled M Y S L O N Y? Because I do not know.
Well, I've, I think I most commonly heard it say Mysloni. I don't know, Sherilyn is probably the resident expert.
Okay, thank you. That's how I would say it, Mysloni.
Other questions for staff or the applicant? Checking hands here, making sure I'm looking, I'm squinting. All right, uh, seeing none, then I will go ahead and close the hearing and ask uh city council to begin deliberation on this ordinance. Counselor Hillier needs a refill.
I can see you all, so that helps.
Uh, if there's uh no uh deliberations, I'll also entertain motions for first and second readings by title only.
I'll make a motion for first reading uh by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, five, dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for title, uh, re- first reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, five, dash twenty-two. Uh, Counselor Hillier.
I.
Counselor Pratt. Didn't hear you.
I.
Counselor Sacco.
I.
Counselor Brooks.
I.
President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also unanimously. Sherilyn.
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance annexing territory at one, one, three, four, five, Southwest Herman Road, tax map two S one, two, two, D, lot five, fifty, into the city of Twalton, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District, annexation two, one, dash, zero, 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 two.
Sorry, a second reading.
Make a motion for second reading of ordinance number one, four, six, five dash twenty-two by title only.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, five, dash twenty-two. Any discussions on the motion? Counselor Hillier.
I.
Counselor Pratt.
I.
Counselor Sacco.
I.
Counselor Brooks.
I.
And President Grimes.
I.
And I vote I also unanimously. Sherilyn.
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance annexing territory at one, one, three, four, five, Southwest Herman Road, tax map two S one, two, two, D, lot five, fifty, into the city of Twalton, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Roads Maintenance District, annexation twenty-one dash zero, 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 two.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance one, four, six, five, dash twenty-two. Any discussions on those motions? Counselor Hillier.
I.
Counselor Pratt.
I.
Counselor Sacco.
I.
Uh, Counselor Brooks.
I.
President Grimes.
To me, this is the right project in the right place, and it's a good annexation, so I will vote yes to this one. I.
All right, thank you. And I vote I also. The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so moving on, we have items removed from consent agenda. We did not have any tonight. Are there any council communications for this evening? Counselor Brooks.
Um, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the council for coming back to the hearing and over all of the information from the um, the last hearing, uh, Valentine's Day, and all the people that came out, and um I know it's kind of funny, but I do want to wish everybody a Valentine's Day, and I think, and I just want to acknowledge that we're here because we we really do have love for the community, um, even though um, sometimes it's really hard to do this job. And then I also just want to remind um, people to look at the updates for the COVID stuff that, you know, I just want to remind people, even people that are not severely immunocompromised, just little um, just have some autoimmune stuff, should be getting their vaccine boosters in three months. And there's other new guidelines as well, so keep um informed and keep you and your family safe so we can rock and roll out in the community in a safe, healthy way together.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I just, you know, the uh dovetail off Counselor Brooks. I appreciate all the folks who came out tonight uh testifying uh with their concerns on the development, but I asked them to stay involved. This is just one step. There's three more steps after this. And these following steps that are ones are, to me, is where you can make more impact and make those changes that you're looking forward to, so stay involved. Uh, we'll probably be seeing this again in the future, uh, either at ARB or other uh different steps during the city process, but stay involved, uh, keep an ear to grindstone, and then uh, those folks who are in the across the street, uh, reach out to either our city manager, Sherilyn Lambos, or the police chief to find out what this residential parking permit program is and how to get it off the ground. And with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, second. Hands up. What's left of Valentine's Day, go ahead and enjoy. Maybe go eat some chocolate, have a very good evening, and take care.